It has anchored both creative vitality and economic development and growth. When this community thrives, our city, residents, and businesses benefit. But when the arts and culture community suffers blows like those inflicted by COVID-19, the loss of revenue, jobs, and events, the impact radiates both within and well beyond our organizations to the many individuals we employ and partner with. We are adapting, we're taking the long view, we're determined to fulfill our missions and be impactful despite the challenges that we know will persist in the coming year. Wearing my Washington Performing Arts hat, I want to spotlight some of our local engagement and partnerships. Throughout our 54-year history, we've been an anchoring partner for the D.C. Public Schools, employing local practitioners and teaching artists throughout our programs in over 100 schools in all eight wards. We're the only arts presenter in the country with two resident gospel choirs, and our Mars Arts DC initiative mobilized partnerships and free events with over 50 organizations last year alone, hosting year-long residence with artists including Chelsea Green, The String Queens, Dupont Brass, and Viva and the Rebels. Like our peers in the National Capital Arts cohort, it would not be possible to mobilize our programs and partnerships without marshaling a mix of public funding and philanthropy. And without a base of public funding, it would be impossible to secure private support. The two are inextricably linked. What we're able to achieve within the D.C. community is significant, and the impact storybook I appended to my testimony speaks to the ways we collectively address creative enterprise and equity. The National Capital Arts cohort strongly supports Mayor Bowser's budget and hopes the council will as well. The budget preserves a dedicated funding stream for the arts, increases the amount available for grants to artists and organizations, sustains the current program structure, and embraces equity among artists and arts organizations. We believe the mayor's budget is vital response to the unprecedented decline in revenue for the arts caused by the coronavirus crisis. I'd like to close with a few words about GoGo, the official music of Washington, D.C. With this designation came Councilmember McDuffie's very appropriate call to implement a program to support and archive GoGo music and its history in the district. The chorus of support has been widespread across many agencies, including the Office of Nightlife and Culture, the D.C. Office of Cable Television, Film Music and Entertainment, and the D.C. Commission on Arts and Humanities. GoGo has been a part of Washington Performing Arts program as well, including our Mars Arts DC concerts, a GoGo book club, and DCPS Honors Ensemble Program. Indeed, given the widespread existing advocacy, this seems like a perfect moment to propel forward a thoughtful strategic planning process, one that looks long-term, linking multi-agency funding and multi-agency advocacy to the development of new funding resources that support GoGo's significance as a cultural touchstone in Washington, not to the exclusion of other arts forms or organizations, but as a coordinated multi-agency effort alongside sustained existing support. Arts organizations and diverse art forms give Washington its unique place in our national cultural landscape. They are all interconnected. I'm proud to be a member of this community and hope that robust public arts funding as currently recommended and structured will continue to be supported at our highest levels of government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billfield. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
I have to, I have to pause because I went on mute. Yes, I can hear you. Good morning.
Let me begin by first saying thank you to the Chair and to Mayor Bowser and the City Council for maintaining a dedicated source of revenue for the arts in the FY21 budget. For many years, the arts have struggled with a very small piece of the financial pie, which I feel hampered the growth and development of our sector. Thanks to the Bowser administration and the council, dedicated funding for the arts in only its first year has successfully achieved the goal of providing efficient support for the district's arts community and provided an increase in overall arts funding for large and small arts organizations and every artist in between. Through her budget, Mayor Bowser strongly demonstrates that the arts remain an important part of the district's economy and culture and must be supported in order to weather and survive the crisis. Mayor Bowser also increased the arts budget by several million, and despite the unprecedented challenges we currently face, we believe that this funding will secure our ability to rebound in the future. Equally important, Mayor Bowser preserved the architecture of the arts funding budget that beats arts groups and artists where they are in their organizational development, and we feel this is important. SubAfrica is the largest African-American arts organization in the city and employs more full-time artists of color than any other arts organization in D.C. This year, the company celebrates its 25th year of serving audiences across D.C. We perform in every D.C. ward, bringing stepping into theaters, classrooms, recreation centers, libraries, and more, and this budget proposal will allow us to improve the tremendous work we have undertaken for more than 25 years. And although the pandemic has brought our live events to a complete halt, we remain committed, as many of my peer organizations, to sharing the joy of our art form with D.C. audiences on the digital platform until we are safely allowed to gather again. SubAfrica is also sadly familiar with the obstacles faced by arts organizations of color, not only in D.C. but across the country. I personally built SubAfrica from the ground up over the last 25 years, and equity issues regarding fundraising, individual donors, grant-making, and overall organizational capacity strike deep at the viability of not only my company but my peer organizations of color. I fully expect that the National Capital Arts Group will work hand-in-hand with the D.C. Commission on Arts and Humanities to create ways to support and broaden the possibilities for these organizations in the immediate future. I look forward to serving and helping with this process.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Medrano? If you're speaking, you are on, you're muted, so...
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning.
Morning. Good morning. Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Bowser, Chairman Mendelson, and the City Council for their continued commitment to dedicated funding for their arts and their direction on funding for the D.C. Commission and the Arts and Humanities, which has ensured more funding for all organizations and individuals. The Arts and Humanities sectors remain an important part of the district's economy and must be supported in order for us all to survive the current crisis. Gala Hispanic Theater is the largest Latino arts group in the city and has a 44-going-on-45-year track record of artistic excellence and service to the community. Today, it stands as a center for Hispanic arts and culture, attracting over 22,000 patrons annually. Since opening its permanent home in the Tivoli, Gala has helped revitalize Columbia Heights, brought diverse sectors of the community together to share excellence in art across economic, social, and cultural and language barriers, educated thousands of youth in the arts, provided jobs to hundreds of underemployed Latinx artists and technicians, drawn national and international visitors to the city, generating tax revenues for D.C., and hosted numerous events and programs for groups without performance space, including the city agencies, as well as forging dynamic partnerships with groups throughout the city. We are very grateful to the D.C. Commission for its years of partnership and support. Over the years, general operating support from the Commission has made it possible for Gala to produce high-quality theater, commission new works by Latinx artists and community residents, and strengthen our youth education and development programs. These funds are essential to our institutional growth and stability, especially in these critical times. C.E.H. grants have also made it possible for Gala to serve almost 9,000 elementary and high school students from every ward in the city. These programs include, these programs introduce students to live Spanish-language theater and arts opportunities and provide them an opportunity to exchange ideas and to encourage tolerance of cultures other than their own. Over the years, grants from the facilities and building initiative have made it possible for Gala to do critical repairs to its facility, including making it the state-of-the-art performance space that serves not only the theater but over 35 other arts groups who have no performance space from throughout the city. As a part of the National Capital Arts cohort, we thank the mayor for preserving the dedicated revenue stream and for increasing the amount available for grants and recommending no changes be made to the program as is. The mayor's budget helps ensure a stable public funding source so that in economic downturns like this one, our arts institutions can bear the burden of the lost revenue. At Gala, we've lost close to $400,000 in earned revenues, yet we must continue to pay our staff and individual artists, all of whom are Latinx or Afro-Latino, and depend on this income for survival. Now more than ever, we need to support the Latinx youth and their families in our out-of-school program, as they make up a large percent of the vulnerable service workers, live in crowded, unhealthy environments, and have little access to healthcare due to language and financial barriers and due to the current anti-immigrant rhetoric that has scared many of them. As a culturally-specific theater of color, we cannot rely on our board of directors to come up with the necessary funds to close this gap, as they themselves have limited financial resources. Finally, we support the mayor's efforts to seek greater equity in the entire city, and we are working with the National Capital Arts in ways that we can take on a greater leadership role in this effort amongst the arts community. We understand and appreciate all of the competing claims on diminished revenue, and we know we all have to play our part in supporting the district's recovery. We respectfully request that the council support the mayor's budget for the arts, and we thank you for all you are doing for our diverse artists and arts groups in this magnificent city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I hate cutting people off, and you went over a little bit. I'm going to try to get better. Mr. Tetra?
In addition to my role... I'm muted, sorry.
No, they unmuted. We can hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry. In addition to my role as director of Ford's Theater for the last 15 years, I'm also the Chair of the National Capital Arts Group. This cohort contains some of the oldest and most established non-federal arts organizations in the city, along with D.C.'s largest African-American and largest Latino arts organization. We employ over 1,000 full-time staff members and thousands of more artists annually, many of whom reside right here in the district. Our organizations help to make Washington, D.C. one of the most artistically vibrant cities in our nation. I'm here first to say thank you to Mayor Bowser, who has put forward a budget proposal which continues the dedicated source of revenue funding, the granting architecture, equity, transparency, and reliability in arts funding that the council established last year. It also provides an increase in the dedicated and critical financial support that D.C. arts and culture organizations are much in need of during this unprecedented time in history. Last year, the National Capital Arts Group advocated for a more specific funding directive from the council that would provide more money and grants to individuals and all organizations, and we're thrilled to say that this goal has been achieved. Beyond the specific dollars that were provided to the National Capital Arts cohort, more money was distributed than ever before. Here are just a few examples. In 2019, excluding the controversial budget enhancement grants, or earmarks, nearly $12 million was distributed to all organizations and individuals. In 2020, that number grew by over 33% to nearly $16 million. In the largest G.O.S. grant program, over 62% of organizations saw an increase, received a new grant, or remained flat. The facilities and building average grant dollars grew by 80%. There was also an increase in the number of individual grants awarded and an increase in the total dollars awarded to individuals. Recently, there have been objections about the percentage of the budget going to the National Capital Arts cohort. I'd like to share a few facts. Prior to the change in the BSA of last year, in the, in the, in the previous four years, fiscal years 16, 17, 18, and 19, the National Capital Arts Groups collectively received 30% of the total grant dollars. That was before we were organized or recognized as a formal cohort. Additionally, over that same period, only 67% of the commission budget went, were allocated for grants, which meant that 33% of the total budget during those four years went to administration, overhead, and events. With the implementation of the Budget Support Act for fiscal year 20, 77% of the total budget must by law be allocated to grants, and within that same law, 28% will go to the National Capital Arts cohort, which means 72% goes to all other organizations, including individual artists. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the council, for these improvements. The increase in funding now being proposed is critical to our industry, especially now when all our theaters and museums are docked for the foreseeable future. We look forward to working with the council and the commission to support the D.C. arts and culture community as we begin to rebuild our city's economy following this devastating public health crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Dwyer?
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for your continued support of the arts and arts education. I'm Maureen Dwyer, Executive Director of Satar Art Center. We provide arts learning for D.C.'s children and teens from low-income and marginalized communities. 85% of our 900 students are Latinx or African-American. Today, I'm also speaking on behalf of the members of the D.C. Alliance for Arts Education, including Capitol Hill Arts Workshop, City Dance, D.C. Youth Orchestra, Joy of Motion, Levine Music, Satar Art Center, and the Theater Lab School of the Dramatic Arts. Collectively, we educate more than 8,000 D.C. youth from all eight wards during the vulnerable out-of-school time hours and employ 400 teaching artists and 115 staff members. First and foremost, we are responding to young people's urgent socio-emotional needs as they face the disparity, isolation, and too frequently, trauma in the throes of the COVID-19 pandemic. We all immediately adapted to online teaching and mentoring and fostering community and self-expression. Our staffs are working remotely and programs are up and running virtually. Today, we are providing arts for nearly 4,000 students online, and this summer will hold virtual camps for nearly 4,000 from all eight wards. The alliance requests that the council support Mayor Bowser's proposed FY21 budget provisions for the commission. The budget retains the crucial dedicated funding and preserves the removed earmarks and increased grant funding and transparency. It also allocates more than a $3 million increase to the budget, acknowledging how essential artistic expression is, is to our ability to cope with this crisis and knowing that the arts will contribute mightily to a recovering economy. Secondly, the Alliance for Arts Education is a group of anchor arts organizations with budgets of $1 million or more. As a group, our general operating support from the commission has remained flat over the past several years despite overall funding for the arts increasing. Moving forward, the alliance would like to help shape an equitable funding structure that enables our organizations to sustain and to grow the number of students we serve and the high quality of our programs. Lastly, the alliance is hard at work addressing the inequities highlighted in the reopen D.C. report regarding equitable education for our children and the growing digital divide. Our closing request is that because the online programming that we've moved to is very cost-intensive and it is a challenging time to add to our budgets, we are seeking emergency funds, private and public, to continue to respond to the socio-emotional needs and bridge the digital divide. Thank you for your consideration.
I think, thank you, Ms. Dwyer. Ms. Rosenthal-Yaff?
Yes, hi. Good morning, Chairman Mendelson.
Morning.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to testify and thank you for your continued support of the arts and humanities and arts and humanities education here in the district. I'm Lissa Rosenthal-Yaffey, the Executive Director of the D.C. Arts and Humanities Education Collaborative. We're an organization of 120 cultural institution members, large and small, including everyone that's testified today, as well as members of that arts education alliance. We're the D.C. organization that works with these institutions, D.C. Public and Public Charter Schools, and the commission, to provide equitable access, experiential learning, and arts and humanities. We have a 23-year history of equitable access to experiential learning, curriculately connected through our public-private partnership initiatives, our arts and humanities for every student program, which has served more than 750,000 students, and our collective impact work for D.C.'s entire arts humanities education community through Any Given Child D.C. We are the organization that collects all of the data to help equitably distribute arts education resources to students in all wards, to students who need the most resources from our arts organizations. We work collectively and collaboratively with the commission every year, and as a service organization, this is often a piecemeal process that without increased and consistent funding for arts education makes our equity work complicated to plan, complicated to execute during good years. And in response to the pandemic, like we're experiencing now, more funding is needed for arts education, for equitable access for D.C. students and families. And much of our experiential programming, like all of our members, has been decimated by COVID-19, and a very large part of our budget has been decimated. However, D.C. Collaborative has worked swiftly, strategically, creatively, in unprecedented and financially challenged times to bring educational programming that complements and supplements student learning. We created a distance learning database. We communicate daily with virtual convenings. We have sessions for teaching artists to share resources for all of our members. We've done this pivot. As you know, the mayor's proposed FY21 budget, the field trip initiative funds that were those $1 million Dahi Field Trip Grant Program funds for the past years were local, non-dedicated tax dollars, and they were transferred to the Aussie FY21 budget. Even though we know that experiential learning won't be the same or possible on location as field trips in the new school year to start, those experiential learning funds are still vital and necessary for our community's work. It's very expensive to transfer to this digital platform, as Maureen had shared. Arts educators and organizations are the first responders to student learning and social-emotional needs, and we have experienced over the past several months of the COVID pandemic that the arts and humanities continue to be vital and necessary vehicles in our changing world and lives in the short term. Arts organizations like the D.C. Collaborative needs emergency funding and increased funding for virtual experiential learning. Investing arts education is also a long-term investment. I know I'm running a bit over, but I'd like to just share one thing in the spirit of public-private partnership, equity, and collaboration, as has been discussed today by these panelists. As you know, the D.C. Collaborative had asked you earlier this year for dedicated funding similar to Humanities D.C. and the National Capital Arts Cohort to support our work, and we realized that to be a true public-private partnership, that our request may not be equitable. In order for dedicated support to be equitable and fair, it needs to be established in partnership with the commission, and if the new arts alliance cohort, especially one that can truly drive equity, is to be established, it needs to be done as a public-private partnership and with many more organizations, including the D.C. Collaborative being central to this collective impact work. So in order for D.C.'s arts and humanities community, education community to be fully equitable and to serve with equity, as we're all talking about today, we need to ensure that we are provided more public sector support and financial resources in arts education learning and with the D.C. Collaborative as that backbone support. And without the D.C. Collaborative leading this work through this single aggregated collective impact portal, there's truly no equity in distributing all of D.C.'s arts and humanities education resources for students, educators, family, from our largest cultural institutions who have testified to our smallest community-based neighborhood organizations. And that's why increased funding for arts education is needed in the commission's budget. And thank you for letting me run over.
I was about to cut you off. Thank you. Thank you, each of you, for your, your testimony. I do have a few questions, and Ms. Rosenthal-Yaffey, I want to apologize, I mispronounced your name when I introduced you.
That's okay. You got my first name right. Most people don't do that.
Okay. Well, I think the full name is...
Yes. Thank you.
The... I want, very quickly, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but how has the public health emergency affected each of you, just in a, in a few words? Well, I'll just go down the line. Ms. Graff?
So it's affected our grantees and potential grantees quite a lot. Right now, we're okay. We've lost some funding, and so it's not terrible, but we are concerned for the long term for ourselves and the people that we would grant money to.
Thank you. The Washington Performing Arts, Ms. Billfield?
We've had to cancel half of our season. We've lost about $800,000 in earned revenue. We had to cancel a number of public programs. We've been able to shift our, many of our arts education engagements online so that the students can continue to learn from home, but it, it's been a catastrophic impact in terms of public events and earned revenue.
Ms. SubAfrica, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. SubAfrica has lost, due to the pandemic, over $1 million in earned revenue, which is critical to our survival as an organization. And thinking about artists, individual artists across the city, this pandemic has really made their capacity to work and earn an income absolutely impossible. So this is a huge devastating impact on arts community.
Thank you, Ms. Medrano. You're muted.
Sorry about that button. Okay. You can hear me?
Yes.
Chairman, it has also had a devastating effect on Gala's earned revenue. We, we were in the heaviest part of our season, so a half of our season was totally canceled, which meant losing about $400,000 in ticket revenues, plus rental incomes. We rent to two churches, as well as fit kids hit the stage from Apple Tree, and they could no longer rent. So that's all lost revenue. Our kids, I really feel the worst for the kids in the Paso Amado after-school because many of them don't have technology. They're cooped up at home, they're scared, they don't want to be at home, and if the summer is more virtual learning, it's very hard. We are doing virtual learning, we have switched to that platform, but they get a lot of pushback that they really feel safer coming, coming to Gala and, and being with us. There are a lot of reasons for that. So it's a challenge, and yes, it's been, we're trying to continue to pay our, you know, as many artists as we can and keep them employed to do virtual work, but it's just not the same as a gathering of people or a community sense. Thank you.
Mr. Tetra?
Mr. Chairman, I will just say that we did a recent survey amongst the 21 National Capital Arts Groups, and just give you a few figures. Just this spring, in lost ticket revenue and admissions, the collective total was over $20 million. There will, the, the National Capital Arts Groups will post $10 million of deficits for this fiscal year, and we are looking at a loss of budgets for next year. Our budgets will be reduced by $46 million. Now, I just want to add that while we were losing that money, the National Capital Arts Groups continued to pay over 300 individual artists to the tune of almost $1 million after the mayor's emergency order to shut down.
Thank you. Ms. Dwyer?
Thank you. Satar's community members have been hit first and worst because they entered this with serious economic barriers already, so many, if not most, parents are unemployed, or if they're able to work, they have no childcare. And additionally, those with, without documentation are ineligible for unemployment benefits. So our community is, is struggling, and that's coming out in harmful ways to the kids. And as an organization, we are primarily contributed income, but the, the nominal earned income, we charge for tuition, we're returning, so the families have the money. We're projected okay for the next six months. After that, it's very, very hard to project because it's hard to anticipate what's going to happen to philanthropic giving this year.
And Ms. Rosenthal?
Yes. Since March 13th, when we had to shut down our arts and humanities for every student program, which we work on with all of the D.C. arts organizations, all the field trips shutting down during the busiest month of field trips, being March and April, that's about almost $200,000 in lost income for the organization. The collaborative does receive a lot of earned income to mostly help get students to and from cultural institutions, but also the administrative fees are the fees that we've lost in this process. And as Maureen shared, our biggest concern is what the fall looks like and how we are all able to pivot our work and service to D.C.'s students. And these virtual programs are expensive. We have teaching artists that don't have the resources that some of our members are fortunately able to provide, but we have a community of arts and humanities educators that need support to help support digital learning.
Thank you. Thank you, each of you, for that. I wanted to ask, I think Mr. Tetra can help on this, but any of the others of you who want to jump in. I have heard some criticism, I would say mostly from those who weren't involved in the budget process last year, of the funding formula that we adopted, and in particular criticism that there's this... And in particular, criticism that there's this National Capital Arts Cohort with the suggestion that it's getting a whole lot of money to the exclusion of other groups. Many or most of you, I think, are members of the cohort. Can you, how do you respond to those criticisms? Do you want to start, Mr. Tetra?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just jump in. I mean, the facts just don't bear that out. And I, you know, as you know, I have thoroughly analyzed the grants over the last, you know, five years. And, you know, just if you look at the total numbers, it just doesn't bear it out. Last year, as I said, you know, 19 was $12 million in GOS, and this year was almost $16 million. So I think that the concept that like 21 groups are taking all the money is a better bumper sticker than the actual facts. And just, you know, the data just doesn't bear out there. You know, I mean, the 30% that I gave you is that literally, over the four years, the National Capital Arts Groups got $19 million out of $65 million that was given out in total grants. That's 30% of the money. So now we're getting 28% of the money. It's just that it's a very specific formula, and maybe that's what the objections are for.
Actually, if I could build on what Paul is saying as well, Jenny Billfield here, that I remember sitting during the February hearings. And Chairman, you asked a number of the local arts groups beyond the National Capital Arts Groups whether their grants had increased this year. And I can't remember a single one who said that their grant hadn't either stayed the same or increased. So even during testimony, well within the arts groups, there were either a holding or increase for the majority of arts organizations. I see Lisa shaking her head. But I'm thinking of the performing arts groups, but please correct me if I'm wrong.
And I'll recognize her in a moment. I do want to say that one of the dynamics that many folks don't know, and many folks have maybe forgotten, is that up until last year, what the council was doing was allocating money to the commission and then earmarking about a third of it. And often earmarking that third to the large organizations that I think are all in the National Capital Arts Cohort. You know, millions of dollars to this theater, or millions of dollars to another organization. And we've largely gotten out of that business because it was too, my own feeling was that while I want to be supportive of every organization, it's a little too arbitrary when I have to pick. And why do I pick one of you and not another of you when the needs are great? And so we got out of that business and rely on the formula. Ms. Rosenthal-Yafi, you wanted to say something?
Oh, just that I'm, as the DC Arts and Humanities Education Collaborative, as the service organization for all of these organizations, unfortunately, our general op support grant, the only grant we were eligible to apply for through the commission, we did see a decrease this fiscal year. Not a tremendous one, but it set the tone for us. It was concerning just because our budget continues to increase as the demands increase on our work. We don't have the benefit of being a million-dollar presenting organization to be able to work within the National Cohort Group, even though we work with and support the cohort group through experiential learning and other work. So I'm excited and appreciative that we can continue to find ways to collaborate together and that we can make funding, the public sector support for arts and humanities, more equitable. So I appreciate this dialogue. Thank you.
How much did your funding go down this year?
It went down, it was modest. It was about $3,000. But it's just, while others have seen tremendous increases and for an organization that serves all of these organizations, it's important for us to have sustained increased support to be the backbone support organization.
And that was 3,000 out of how much?
117, approximately, $1,000,000.
Ms. Madrano?
Yes, I'd just like to add, and thank you, Lisa, that all of us in the National Capital Arts Cohort are committed to helping every arts education institution. We're all aware of the fact that arts education has often been direly underfunded. And we are all looking for ways to collaborate and to partner and to find possibly another source of dedicated funds and encourage people to work towards increased funding for arts education institutions and teaching artists. And I know, I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, if I may just say, I appreciate that. However, if we're looking at the same threshold of a million-dollar organization for 10 years or whatever the criteria is, I look forward to having a conversation about that because there are some really strategic community-based organizations that don't meet that criteria. The Collaborative is 23 years old. We only have a budget of about $800,000 to $900,000 a year at the most. So we wouldn't even qualify for that. So I just look forward to more conversation for all of us to see how we can equitably distribute the resources, especially for DC students and educators.
Right.
Yeah, and let me add, I'm looking at Ms. Dwyer. Has a budget of over a million, but is not eligible because they're not a presenting organization. It is an issue that I want to look at. I'm not sure we'll make an adjustment this year, but it very much is on my mind, partly because I can't go anywhere without hearing from somebody about the fact that arts, that present, that educational organizations are excluded. And so I do want to have increasing discussion about that, or continuing discussion. And look if, look at whether we can make some changes. But again, I don't, I'm not contemplating that in this budget cycle.
May I chime in, Chairman? I just want...
Yes.
I would just like to add that we think, at least those of us in the alliance, feel the architecture is improved in that it's acknowledging that larger organizations require more funds. And the education organizations only grow their budgets to serve more children. I mean, we're not growing for any other reason other to make sure that systemic inequities are met. And it's kind of filling in gaps that the public school system isn't always able to fill. So we acknowledge that it's an improvement, that larger organizations can count on a little more sustainability and planning year for year so we all know how many we can serve. And we'd just really like to see it not only be presenting, but also be education in the future, understanding that this year is a complex one, but we can work on it through the next year.
Thank you. So a question. And it's for Mr. Williams. Now, you are a member of the National Capital Arts Cohort. You, in your testimony, I'd like you to just elaborate on this. You said equity issues regarding fundraising, individual donors, grant making, and overall organizational capacity strike deep at the viability of not only my company, but my peer organizations of color. And I just want you to elaborate on that.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. You know, this is an issue that is not just unique to Washington DC. It really is an issue across the country. Step Africa has a budget of almost $2.5 million and only been around 25 years. Yet, we are the largest African-American arts organization. Gala Hispanic, my peer here, is about 1.8 to 2 million. They're the largest Latin. The largest non-organization of color is probably $25, $30 million. So there is an issue in terms of the building capacity for organizations of color. The challenges that we face to fundraise for individual donors is very, very different. And organizational capacity, I've been speaking to a lot of my peer organizations about the challenges that they face specifically to build strong institutions. And I think it's something that I've talked about to my peers here, the Washington Performing Arts and Paul at Ford's, about how larger arts organizations can get in play when it comes to building the ecology of other arts organizations. At Step Africa, I have benefited from not only capacity building from the DC Commission on Arts and Humanities that has allowed me to build and sustain a strong organization over 25 years. I started off with zero money, right? But I've also had great relationships with larger arts organizations that have helped mentor and helped me structure programs that would lead to my eventual success. I think this can be replicated. I think that the, I'm very glad to be a part of the National Capital Arts Cohort. I'm also very glad to kind of structure activities that will directly address the issues that we face. I don't think it's an "and" either-or situation. I think it's how we support large organizations, but also how we build capacity of smaller groups going forward. So I think it's a great conversation to have, Chairman, and I'm very open to making that happen. And thank you for your question.
Thank you. I see two hands, and then I'm going to have to move on. Ms. Rosenthal-Yafi?
Yeah, if I can just add on, you know, just to frame up the role of the Collaborative, we are an alliance. We are a coalition. We were created as a public-private partnership with DCPS, DC Commission on Arts and Humanities, with Washington Performing Arts as a founding member, with Humanities DC. We were a partner of the commission up until four years ago. Now that Humanities DC also has dedicated funding, different from the National Capital Area Cohort or this new alliance that is looking to navigate this pathway, I think we need to think about the pre-existing alliances and coalition that is the DC Collaborative when we talk about arts education. We are in direct service to all of you, everyone testifying, to the entire arts and humanities education community. Yet, we often become the most fragile organization without stability. So if the thresholds are to be considered moving forward and how this works, I hope that we can also speak with the staff and experts at the commission about how a true public-private partnership works and how we really are supporting, how the larger organizations are really helping support the smaller community-based organizations. You know, the Collaborative, we're that neutral entity that does that work already with very small resources. But we do this, this is our collective impact work for our DC community. So I do hope that we can reframe and rethink, at least use education as the pilot. Let's use the education community as the pilot, how we can improve in supporting all of our organizations through public-private partnerships with equity.
Thank you. Ms. Madrano?
I'd just like to follow up, thank you, Chairman, on what Brian said. For organizations of color such as Gala, we are 45 years old and our budget's still barely on 2 million. We're one of the largest nationally, which is a very sad statement. You would think there would be with, you know, 35% Spanish-speaking and a huge population, there would be another institution. We are working hard to train young people to, for, in terms of financial literacy, in terms of leadership skills, because the problem is that there's nobody sitting at those boards. There aren't very few people of color, Latinos, people of color, sitting in boardrooms and sitting on foundation boards and sitting on corporate boards. And that is the problem with the private funding versus the government funding, which we can compete to get, and are very appreciative of that. Also, in terms of board development, it's a different structure culturally in the Latino world. They don't have the deep pockets, and they're not used to giving to nonprofits. In many of these countries, nonprofits are considered, you know, sketchy. So you don't do that. You give to your church or to your family or, you know, it's a very different mentality. So we face those obstacles in terms of institution building, which makes us even more dependent on the public funds. We don't want to be dependent on those, and we are trying to build private support wherever we can. But I think it's a different systemic heritage that we face. So thank you.
Thank you. So I have no further questions for you. I do want to say this. This is more of a statement. A number of you spoke of appreciation of what the council's done and what the mayor's done. I just want to review briefly some of the history. In 2017, the Arts Commission spent 20, almost $21 million. And for the current year, the budget is just under, this is with the revision the mayor's proposed with the supplemental budget, just over $34 million, going from $20 million in 2017 to $34 million this year. Last year, you'll remember that we had a fight that the council had approved the year before dedicated funding, and the mayor had proposed to eliminate the dedicated funding. The council restored it, and I'm grateful that the mayor didn't renew that challenge this year. And your budget, for reasons I don't understand, because our revenues are declining, but the projected revenues from the dedicated tax mean that your proposed budget for next year is $38.7 million. So we've significantly increased. We have, because of the council's stubbornness, dedicated funding for the arts. And the formula, while I think it needs some tweaks, and I mean tweaks, I don't mean major adjustments, the formula seems to be working at least better than before when a third of the money was getting earmarked by the council. So it's a better picture, and I'm pleased that my colleagues and I, that the council's been as supportive. And I look forward to continuing to work with you all. So thank you all for your testimony. I'm going to excuse you all, and we'll go to the next group of witnesses concerning Events DC. We're now turning to witnesses from the public concerning Events DC. There are 12 who've signed up, and so what we're going to do is we're going to allow six into the, I don't know what you call it, I want to say the witness room at a time. And then after this group of 12 witnesses, we'll turn to the government witnesses. Judy Esti, who's Vice President of the Platform of Hope. Elizabeth Falcon, who's Executive Director of DC Jobs with Justice. Veronica Masqueta, who's Senior Bilingual Tenant Organizer and Program Oversight Lead. Kathy Hollinger, who's President and CEO of the Restaurant Association of Metropolitan Washington. Brian Williams, who we just heard from, but he wants to testify concerning Events DC. He's the Executive Director of Step Africa. And Claire Dempsey, Case Manager, Capital Area Immigrants Rights Coalition, also known as CARE. And I assume all six are here. We'll begin with Ms. Esti, and it's three minutes. If you are on gallery view, you can see the clock, which says five minutes, but it should say three. So Ms. Esti, could you begin?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Judy Esti, and I'm here representing the Platform of Hope, which is a nonprofit initiative based in Ward One that engages with cohorts of families to identify and pursue their goals. You may not have heard of us, but our strategic alliance partners are Mary Center Jubilee Housing, Jubilee Jumpstart, and Satar Art Center, who you just heard from before. I'm here to say that the Events DC, DC CARE's $5 million cash assistance for excluded workers is essential. And I'm here today to testify on behalf of the experiences of our families because, quite frankly, they are scared to testify on this topic. And on behalf of this community that is not being listened to, and that's really being erased in the narrative about the reopening. Our community has been one of the hardest hit by the pandemic. Columbia Heights, where a majority of our families reside, is the DC neighborhood with the highest rate of coronavirus cases. And yet, the majority of our families have been excluded from any public support. 58% of our families, they are not eligible for unemployment or the federal stimulus. These families are overwhelmed with the quandary that they can stay home, stay safe, but have no money to support their families. Or they can work, put food on the table, and live in fear of getting sick. One mother wrote to us, "For more than a month, I have not hugged my son because I go out to work and nobody knows what I can bring from the outside." This is not the way that people should be living. These are just the stats from our group. Employment, 69% have lost their jobs or are working less. Financials, 85% have lost some or all of their income. 36% lack access to household internet. 51% need a computer. 38% are paying about, are worried about paying their rent. And I repeat, 58, more than half, are not eligible for unemployment insurance or a federal stimulus check. The Events DC, DC CARE's money is the only source of direct support for these families. Think of that, in a $15.5 billion budget, $5 million to support the thousands of families who are facing a similar hardship, that is 0.3%. This money has not been moved, by the way. Somehow, funding for businesses has been moved, but not for these families. And there's been no commitment to any future funding to support these families, despite the fact that $1,000 per family will basically cover the rent from two months ago. And when limitations are up on evicting families, who do you think will be the first families to be evicted? who do you think will be the first families to be evicted? Here are some stories from our families that they felt willing to share. "My life has been impacted by COVID-19 in a difficult way, in all labor aspects. It's a great stress having to go out and not knowing who you're nearby to, and then at home, having to keep distance from your loved ones. It has impacted me a lot because I tested positive for the virus. Recently, I have felt powerless due to being sick, and it needs to be me who takes care of my daughters and knowing that at any moment, they can get sick too. I feel unsafe emotionally in mind because I'm scared that I will be sick and I will get my children sick. I feel I need another job because where I work is unsafe because there are a lot of people that are sick. So I'm here today to urge the council to ensure that this cash assistance moves through D.C. now, to find a way to support future cash assistance for excluded families and to make reopening decisions with these stories in mind. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Esti. Ms. Falcon?
Thank you, Chairman Mendelson, for the ability to testify today. My name is Elizabeth Falcon, and I'm the Executive Director of D.C. Jobs with Justice. And also, thank you to Councilmember Gray, who I see on the list as well. D.C. Jobs with Justice helped bring together over 50 organizations to advocate for public funding to provide cash assistance to excluded workers during the pandemic. We appreciate that a majority of the council, including you, shared the sentiment that cash assistance for excluded workers is critical for our safety and recovery. We applaud Events DC for responding to the call and providing $5 million in assistance to undocumented residents. However, much more is needed. The $5 million available from Events DC will provide 5,000 families with $1,000 in assistance. Unfortunately, there are over 30,000 undocumented residents in D.C., so most will not be served. Also, $1,000 is hardly enough to compensate for the nearly three months of lost revenue. Events DC has created a stream, but D.C. Council must expand it to a river that can reach our neighbors in need. Just as the federal government infused money into our unemployment system to keep households economically stable, so should D.C. Council make cash assistance available to those for whom unemployment is not an option. And I'm not saying that we can give people full unemployment benefits, but we estimate that providing a realistic baseline of economic security for all excluded workers would mean an investment of closer to $50 million, 10 times what is available now. I'm working tirelessly with five community-based organizations who will be implementing the Events DC funds. These organizations are unrelenting in their service to the community every day and in standing up this new project. And they are joined by nearly 100 other organizations who are creating pipelines into these core agencies so we can reach deep into immigrant communities to connect to those in need. We are all waiting eagerly for the process to be fully operational, which I believe will happen very shortly. Excluded workers include tens of thousands of immigrant families and other workers who have been locked out of unemployment and/or federal assistance because of their immigration status or lack of formal work history. These people make D.C. work and pay taxes. While we deeply appreciate that Events DC stepped into the void with funding for undocumented workers, there are still many who are cut out of the traditional economy for other reasons. Transgender residents, returning citizens, and others have been made unwelcome in traditional employment due to bias, racism, and transphobia. We cannot allow the district to look the other way while these residents have also been responsible neighbors and stayed home with the rest of us for the good of the whole, are left to quietly slip into deep poverty. Many immigrant families are in industries that will be slowest to recover, like restaurants and hospitality, and will also need sustained economic security beyond this period, whether or not D.C. experiences another peak. We want to continue to be partners with the council to address this need. D.C. Jobs with Justice is in touch with nearly 100 organizations who have joined the distributing organizations and Events DC to build an infrastructure to reach excluded workers. D.C. Council should build on this by moving more money into the communities most cut off from assistance during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Falcon. Ms. Mosqueta?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you, Chairman Mendelson, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Veronica Mosqueta, and I am a Senior Tenant Organizer at the Latino Economic Development Center. Our program works to preserve affordable rental housing throughout the District of Columbia by providing assistance to low-income tenants to form tenant organizations and assert their rights. The tenants we work with are people from all walks of life. Many are working-class undocumented immigrants whose labor keeps the lights on, keeps families fed, and keeps all of us alive. What we've seen during this public health and economic crisis is the exacerbated disparity they're experiencing because they have been excluded from federal, state, and local emergency aid. Many of them have been out of work or unable to work due to health issues, and in a lot of cases, they've been unable to make ends meet. What we're seeing is a small fraction of that inequity since we know that the undocumented community in D.C. alone is made up of about 30,000 households. Without paid leave or healthcare, countless people have been faced with impossible questions about how to pay rent or put food on the table. And even before the crisis, many individuals and families were already extremely low-income and faced numerous barriers to make ends meet, even in the best of times. Because of this reality, we are one of the 50-plus organizations that readily join to advocate for funds for excluded workers during the pandemic. We applaud Events DC for stepping up and putting forward $5 million to support undocumented workers. Yet, we want to also recognize that unfortunately, these funds will not be enough. The funding from Events DC will provide 5,000 families with a one-time payment of $1,000, which will not be sufficient in sustaining a household, which so far has lost almost three months of income. Even in rent-controlled buildings, rent is oftentimes more than $1,000, and we know that this income loss will continue as the industries many people are a part of will be the slowest to recover. Additionally, the Events DC funds are not available for all kinds of excluded workers, like those in the informal economy, predominantly made up of Black and Brown folks who cannot access unemployment because of lack of formal work history but who have also been cut off from their sources of income. Plus, individuals who are unable to access traditional or fully legal employment because of structural racism, high incarceration rates, transphobia, and anti-immigrant bias. Excluded workers will need sustained economic security in the months to come. So we now ask D.C. government to do its part to meet the needs of its community. We ask D.C. government to ensure the needs of the community are reflected in the 2021 fiscal year budget, and because we cannot take another slow startup time to also use and expand on the infrastructure that the Events DC funds will move through. They are using trusted institutions and transparent processes to release these funds. In our work with the other 50-plus agencies, we've estimated the amount that would provide a realistic baseline of economic security for excluded workers would require an investment of closer to $50 million, which we know is 10 times what is available now. We are thinking big picture here and fully recognize that without cash assistance, excluded workers are at risk of homelessness or other impacts of deep poverty, which will hurt themselves, their families, and their communities in the long term. This will not only broaden the racial and economic disparity that already exists in D.C., but will cost D.C. a lot more than $50 million to resolve later. We're continuing to work together to identify the budget strategy that we think will serve the needs of the communities and want to have the necessary conversations and collaborate with the council to meet the needs of all excluded workers throughout D.C. during this grave and critical moment. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mosqueta. Kathy Hollinger?
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson. Good morning, Councilmember Gray. My name is Kathy Hollinger, and I am President of the Restaurant Association Metropolitan Washington. We are an advocate, resource, and community for a diverse range of locally grown, locally operated, dynamic restaurant and food service sector operators in the district. I am here today in support of Events DC, which, under the leadership of its CEO Greg Odell, is a key anchor in the district's hospitality community as they build, create, and host premier events and experiences that enhance lives and jobs all across all wards. R M W and Events DC have been marketing partners since 2013, fostering a mutually beneficial cross-promotional partnership where both organizations can align locally and nationally in positioning Washington DC as a premier dining, hospitality, and venue destination. Events DC's support has allowed R M W to create inclusive marketing, programming locally and nationally that drives awareness to the district's unique and impressive restaurant and food service community, giving us the ability to activate restaurants, who have little to no marketing capital, to plug into free, customized marketing that creates visibility for their establishments during various shows, meetings, concerts, as well as live and cultural special events hosted by the authority throughout the year. In addition, the support received from Events DC over the last seven years has aided us significantly, allowing us to rethink much-needed marketing for established programs like Metropolitan Washington Restaurant Week and, of course, our prestigious annual Rami Award Celebration, which is now housed at the Walter E. Washington Convention Center as we always look to recognize, honor, and celebrate the tremendous efforts of thousands who make up our local food service community. The determined and clear understanding of the symbiotic and mutual beneficial facets of this partnership are what make it so successful. Our collaborative actions position the restaurant industry, a major economic driver for the district that contributes well over $400 million annually through sales tax, to thrive in conjunction with citywide events and programming, which in turn directly supports Events DC's annual budget. The authority is also an important supporter of programming that directly impacts the lives of district residents through charitable community efforts and support of nonprofit educational programs, including our organization's workforce training program for DCPS students, Pro Start. Recently, Events DC has further demonstrated how it is a true hospitality partner during the COVID-19 crisis by supporting sector industries and hospitality, including restaurants, hotels, and individuals. Together, R M W and Events DC created the Restaurant Operator Relief Fund as a way to extend the D.C. Small Business Recovery Microgrants Program housed in the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. In a time where businesses are looking for relief any way they can achieve it and in a variety of ways, this funding is a critical addition that is helping restaurants cover some modest expenses in the short term while they await additional relief through federal measures like PPP program. The restaurants supported by the Operator Relief Fund add immensely to the draw of our local dining scene, which total employed nearly 64,000 individuals in D.C. before this pandemic. The second-largest private employer in the district, restaurants are imperative to support and save. These businesses are essential and have been deemed so by regional leaders as they are permitted to continue to operate so they can serve their communities in need of meals. I appreciate your willingness to hear my testimony today. Thank you for your time and consideration and for going over.
Thank you, Ms. Hollinger. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. Glad to be here. StepAfrica is founded in Washington DC in 1994, and we're the first professional company dedicated to our art form. And in addition to performing locally, nationally, and internationally, the company is also dedicated to arts education activities, serving over 18,000 students in the district, I should say, each year. Events DC funding allows organizations like StepAfrica to make a significant cultural and community impact in the district and represent the district to out-of-town audiences. Events DC, through its generous and accessible grant programs, which are a critical source of support to a wide array of organizations, annually helps our organizations serve Washington DC in extremely creative ways, reminding citizens of the tremendous beauty within our city limits and introducing many to the amazing creative opportunities found here. One of StepAfrica's recent projects, StepFest on Kingman and Heritage Islands in Ward Seven, supported by Events DC, saw my company activate one of our city's most underutilized assets in green spaces. Since this project launched in 2017, Kingman and Heritage Islands are visited and enjoyed by more diverse groups, I should say, than ever, and its future as a community gathering space looks incredibly bright. Events DC helps to make projects like StepFest and so many others possible for small and mid-sized arts organizations in our city. And so, support for Events DC invariably translates into support for many, many groups and individuals across our city. And I'm glad that the arts represented. A StepAfrica is also a recipient of funding from Events DC over the past several years, including they contributed to our gala to support StepAfrica's 25th anniversary. And this is huge because the company serves as a cultural ambassador of Washington DC while premiering abroad and represents the richness of D.C. as a rich, premier cultural destination to international audiences. We also look forward to activating new spaces developed by Events DC in Ward Seven and Eight as the year progresses. I mean, Events DC invests in all of our city's wards, creating safe spaces for our community to gather and celebrate. Thank you so much for allowing me to testify, and I wholeheartedly support Events DC as they continue to invest deeply in the residents and the organizations of Washington DC.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and Ms. Dempsey.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Claire Galilei. Program of Care Coalition. My testimony today is to provide insight on the impact of the Events DC relief funding on the D.C. immigrant community. As a nonprofit that serves to pain immigrants and families, we commend Events DC for the support they're providing for excluded workers. This funding will be vital for people like our client Antonio, whose family fled the U.S. after they were violently attacked and threatened by gangs in their home country. Upon arrival, the family was separated, and Antonio was put in immigration detention. As he had previously been the breadwinner supporting his family through working several odd jobs, Antonio's detention put enormous emotional and financial stress on his family. Luckily, Antonio was recently granted bond and is now reunited with his family. But his homecoming is not without challenges. Being released in the middle of a pandemic without legal status means waiting several months for work authorization and with few job prospects in sight. This economic uncertainty is exacerbated by his family's ineligibility for both unemployment and CARES Act benefits. D.C.'s immigrant community has been disproportionately impacted by this pandemic. This funding provided by Events DC will create an important safety net to families like Antonio's and reduce their risk of experiencing homelessness, illness, and other adverse effects of poverty. While the Events DC funding is a great start, the one-time cash payments provided to 5,000 families is simply not enough. There are an estimated 30,000 undocumented immigrants living in D.C. and many more with status who are still ineligible for federal benefits. The relief package from Events DC also overlooks individuals, like our client Raoul, who have status but are still locked out of federal benefits. Raoul came to the U.S. in 2014 when he was just 16 years old. In May, he was granted special immigrant juvenile status, a protection reserved for immigrants who are neglected or abandoned by one or both parents. While Raoul is grateful to have been granted status, he has struggled to find meaningful employment and support his two-year-old daughter after being released at the height of a pandemic. He is ineligible for federal assistance, and his legal status also prevents him from receiving cash assistance through Events DC, making his family more vulnerable to poor health and housing outcomes. These are D.C. residents who are core to our community. This is not merely a question of ethics, but a necessary measure to keep our families healthy, preserve our city's economy, and save us tax dollars in the long term. We urge the D.C. Council to expand D.C. relief funds and make them available to additional excluded workers like Raoul. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Thank you, each of you, for your testimony. Several of you did not give us, as far as I can tell, copies of your statements. And so, if you would, that would be helpful. You can email it to us. And I believe that email address is cow@dccouncil.us. That would be helpful. If you stick around, I think we're going to, after I recognize Councilmember Gray, we will move you back into the attendee room. It's a little hard to imagine rooms with Zoom platform, but if you stick around, when we get to Mr. Odell, who's the last witness today, I will be asking him the status of that grant. I've had several conversations with him.[1748.28] And if you think about it, because of the nature of undocumented individuals, it's not like there is a standard record as we have with unemployment insurance, and therefore, it's just easy to distribute the money. And my understanding is Events DC has been working to find a way to distribute the money. I think one of the witnesses said a few minutes ago that they expected the money will get out the door soon. But, Mr., I will question Mr. O'Dell if he doesn't speak to it on his own, and we will hear more then. Mr. Gray, do you have any questions? Five minutes for questions. I'm going to assume that Councilmember Gray does not have any questions for each of you, so I'm going to excuse you. Thank you, each of you, for your testimony, and I'm going to proceed to call the next six witnesses. Bridget Malley, who is with the Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Washington. Alma Salado, who is with Brea Public Charter School. Conrad Kenley, who is chairman of the D C Jazz Festival. Ed Lazir, who's listed as a public witness. Diana Mayhew, who's president of the National Cherry Blossom Festival. Ingrid, who is a member of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. And Carol Muhammud, who is president of O F T O N, Oftan Organization. We'll begin with Ms. Malley, Bridget Malley. Good morning.
Morning. How are you? Chairman Mendelson and members of the D C Council, thank you for your ability to testify today. My name is Bridget Malley, and I'm a D C Ward Four resident and program manager for the Enterprise Education and Employment Services Department at Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Washington. For over 90 years, Catholic Charities has empowered vulnerable, low-income individuals and families in Washington, D.C., in the Washington, D.C. community. We serve anyone in need, including individuals experiencing homelessness, immigrants and refugees, returning citizens, and individuals with disabilities. Last year, Catholic Charities served nearly 143,000 people in need in our community. We applaud Events DC for putting forward funds for excluded workers. However, the $5 million allocated to support excluded workers by Events DC is not enough. With the funding from Events DC, only 5,000 families will be supported. This covers about 17% of those who are undocumented and living in D.C. Immigrant families have been hit particularly hard by COVID-19, as most are in the industries that will be slowest to recover. This has been made evident by the work of our organization located in Ward One, D.C. The Catholic Charity Spanish Catholic Center has primarily served immigrant families for 52 years. For over 15 years, we have had a small weekly food program that provided 100 bags of fresh produce meant to be a supplemental source of groceries to our clients. Within the first week of the stay-at-home order, we'd align around the block of over 500 individuals, primarily immigrants, seeking their sole source of groceries for the week for their families. These numbers have not decreased, and we anticipate our program will need to sustain this model of support through the fall. Our clients often represent the excluded workers of D.C. Many of them have come off the food pantry line and assisted us in our distribution to ensure every family gets their food as quickly and as safely as possible. Their compassion and patience does not surprise me, considering these are the individuals who uphold our community. They are the workers who ensure our hospitality industry continues to thrive. They can be found on our construction sites or cleaning our offices overnight. They are the tireless individuals who work long hours to support our economy. This community needs and deserves the support of the D C government. We encourage the D C government to ensure that Events DC funds are released in a timely way to help individuals when they need it most. A slow timeline will hurt everyone involved. Catholic Charities would like to express its support for D C Jobs with Justice and the five other trusted organizations mobilizing to implement Events DC funds. At Catholic Charities, we already have a list of clients we are ready to refer. We deeply appreciate that Events DC is providing these funds for excluded workers. D C Council should build upon this by moving more money into the communities most cut off from assistance during the pandemic. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malley. Alma Salado?
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson and members of the City Council. My name is Alma Salado, and I'm a student of Brea Public Charter School, where my husband and I are seeking an education to provide a better future for our families, especially our three-year-olds, who will be joining us at Brea as a preschooler in the fall. My husband is taking classes to learn English, and I am working towards my high school diploma. I am here today to thank Events DC for investing $5 million to support excluded workers and undocumented immigrants in D.C. I appreciate that you recognize the unique needs immigrants have in this pandemic. My family has been very much impacted by this pandemic, just as much as any other family in the district. I lost my job, and my husband's hours were severely reduced to three days a week, half-days. Many families in our city and across the country has gotten financial support during this time of need. My family was left out. We had to sell our vehicle to buy us peace of mind and to keep us going, always with the hope that at least one of us can soon return to work full-time. We are more than two months into this pandemic, and the city has not taken steps to provide cash assistance for so many immigrant families in our city. I am still fighting the feeling that I don't matter, that my husband doesn't matter, and that my child doesn't matter. I know that I'm not the only one who feels like this. We are exposed to a precedent in federal government that tells us that we don't matter. But we also live in a sanctuary city that has made a promise to be a safe place for us. I am here today on behalf of my family and other immigrant families in our city to ask the Council to live up to the promise of D C being a sanctuary city and to invest additional fundings to support excluded workers and immigrants because we are a vital part of this community. This pandemic has disproportionately affected families like mine, and we need your support. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Ms... Conrad Kenley? Mr. Kenley, I believe you're muted.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Chairman Mendelson and members of the D C Council Committee of the Whole. On behalf of the D C Jazz Festival, thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the work being carried out by Events DC. My name is Conrad Kenley, and I'm proud to serve as chairman of the D C Jazz Festival Board of Directors. Founded in 2004, the D C Jazz Festival is a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing enriching and entertaining programs that introduce students and adults from all walks of life to jazz. Our annual D C Jazz Fest is the district's largest jazz festival and a signature event in Washington's cultural calendar. Since its inception, the D C Jazz Fest has grown in size and stature and has attracted visitors from across the United States and abroad. In addition, our organization provides free year-round education programs that extend our reach into underserved communities and enhance the quality of life for D C public and charter school students. Events DC has supported the D C Jazz Fest since 2010, and in 2017, Events DC became the presenting sponsor of the D C Jazz Fest. In 2019, Events DC provided $500,000 of financial support that was critical for the festival to attract higher-profile talent, expand programming, and extend our marketing campaign to national publications and increase visitation to the district. Most recently, the 2019 D C Jazz Fest attracted a record-breaking 150,000 attendees. It featured 167 events in more than 40 D C clubs, hotels, galleries, community centers, libraries, and arts venues. Programming took place in 25 neighborhoods across all eight wards of the district. The festival's signature D C Jazz Fest at the WARC Weekend presented 45 diverse programs at multiple stages, including the anthem. Our education village at the WARC offered free all-day education programs for children and adults with our festival headliners. In total, programming at the WARC served 117,000 attendees, a threefold increase over 2018. The economic impact to the district of the D C Jazz Fest has grown to $50 million, including more than 21,000 hotel room nights in 2019. Continued support of the D C Jazz Fest from Events DC has been critical to this growth. Simply put, the D C Jazz Festival would not take place without the support of Events DC. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenley. Mr. Ed Lazir?
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson and members of the committee. Thank you so much. Very good?
Yes, good morning.
Great. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Ed Lazir. I'm here today to thank Events DC for contributing $5 million in financial aid for immigrants who are shut out of federal relief and out of D C's relief packages. I urge the Council to support the request of the excluded worker community for an additional $50 million in assistance for these residents. I also encourage the Council to expand eligibility to other residents who do not qualify for unemployment insurance because they work in the informal economy. This year shows more clearly than ever that our budget is a moral document. Budget decisions in the pandemic will be a matter of life and death and financial survival for many, particularly for our immigrant neighbors and others in the informal economy who are suffering greatly. Many immigrants work in the hard-hit hospitality industry and have lost all of their earned income. These jobs will come back slowly, meaning many will spend a long time without any income. Immigrants also are suffering greatly from COVID-19, in part because they often live in overcrowded situations or work in jobs that they cannot do remotely. Other workers in the informal economy also cannot access unemployment insurance and have not been eligible for the Events DC funding. We should include them as well. A compassionate city that says it cares about the well-being of its immigrant residents should not let these neighbors suffer. Thousands of residents found themselves overnight in the position of being unable to pay their rent by food or meet other basic needs. Protecting the well-being of these residents is not only a moral duty, it's also critical to stabilizing our city and helping us recover from this pandemic. As I said, I support the request of the Excluded Worker Coalition for $50 million in additional funding through FY21 to help these families. Saying we cannot afford to help our immigrant neighbors is not only disappointing, it's just wrong. From hospitality to food service to office maintenance and retail, immigrants are the backbone of the key industries in the city that have helped us prosper and build up over $1.4 billion in reserves that I think we should tap even more to get through this pandemic. Beyond that, the Council should look to close tax loopholes that have leaked revenue for years, such as the qualified high-technology companies' tax subsidies that we all know are useless. Just this step could free up $25 million, allowing wasteful corporate subsidies to stay on the books while pandemic victims are suffering would be shameful. The district can and should include everyone who has been hurt by this unprecedented crisis. It's what's right for our community and for our community's future. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Lazir. Diana Mayhew. You are muted.
Okay, sorry. I was trying to unmute myself. Good morning, Chairman Mendelson and members of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Diana Mayhew, president of the National Cherry Blossom Festival. The National Cherry Blossom Festival attracts, in a normal year, 1.5 million attendees and generating more than $100 million in spending in Washington, D.C. I appreciate the opportunity today to testify in support of Events DC, an important organization that supports so many city functions. The National Cherry Blossom Festival is among the D C organizations that they support annually through not only financial investment, but also leadership involvement and service on NCBF's Board of Directors. The Events DC marketing team also provides guidance and collaboration to support the festival's marketing efforts and brand experiences, including the award-winning National Cherry Blossom Festival Parade, which Events DC has been the presenting sponsor of for the past eight years. This year's unusual spring and unprecedented challenges demonstrated the importance of Events DC's support, as well as the Council's, of course. Festival events were canceled only nine days prior to opening day. Working with key stakeholders and technology partners, the festival team was able to immediately pivot to present a virtual festival. We brought engaging experiences, as well as the blossoms, to the living rooms of hundreds of thousands of people from around the world. We also garnered more than $3.5 billion impressions through earned media and public relations, keeping a positive spotlight on the District of Columbia at a time when we needed it the most. In addition, we were able to continue our efforts for D C community programs as well as present an encore presentation of the parade, which was a compilation of past parade broadcasts, which was nationally syndicated, airing in 92% of U.S. markets. The Events DC definitely is the organization in this city that spearheads our entertainment, our culture, our arts. They bring our entertainment to our communities. Their investment helps support greater exposure and awareness, drives benefits of tourism into the neighborhoods, and helps to power our travel and tourism industry. As Events DC takes a lead in the economic recovery of Washington, D.C., the National Cherry Blossom Festival organization will work closely with them and other city organizations to play a key role in that recovery plan. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. I believe Ingrid is not here, and we only have her first name because I believe she didn't want her last name. All right, I'm told that Ingrid is on, so...
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Why don't you proceed?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ingrid. I am a very proud domestic worker. I am a member of the D C chapter of the National Domestic Workers Alliance, and I am speaking today on behalf of the tens of thousands of domestic workers in D C area. Our chapter has spoken with members of the council before about our domestic workers bill of rights, a proposal which was introduced in the fall of 2019 and which is currently in the Committee on Labor and Workforce Development. Domestic workers are excluded from some of the most basic workers protections, and our proposal will ensure that we have all the same rights that any other worker has. Today, we would like to speak on a different topic, the crisis of unemployment that many of us are facing as a result of the COVID pandemic. I've been working in D C for 20 years before the pandemic. I've been working cleaning homes, but in the past, I've been a nanny and also take care of senior citizens. The work that we do as a domestic worker is essential. That's never been more clear than it is now. During the pandemic, that is why we are here today. We are asking you to recognize all the work we do taking care of the community. The situation right now is crazy for so many people. So many of us have a last work and have little to no income to take care of ourselves and our families. For those who aren't eligible for federal COVID relief, including immigrants, people are barely getting by. We are sharing with each other and helping each other out, but there are not much to go around. I even know some domestic workers who've gotten sick with COVID, and they don't have the resource to take care of themselves during these difficult times. We don't know how long we are going to be in this situation. It's not only putting us in an impossible situation economically, it's also affecting us emotionally. If depressed, you feel so uncertain about the future. We appreciate that Events DC has already committed $5 million for workers who are excluded from federal COVID relief, and we appreciate that community organizations that are working together to distribute this... and we appreciate that community organizations that are working together to distribute these funds. We also know that one-time payment of 1,000 for 5,000 families are a great start, but they are not going to be enough. This crisis of unemployment is going to stretch on for many more months, and we will need much more to survive. And there are tens of thousands of families in DC that qualify, but with current funding, only 5,000 will get help. As a member of the Excluded Workers Coalition, we are calling on the council to include additional funding in the Events DC budget to continue to support excluded workers in the difficult months ahead. This money is literally a lifeline for thousands of DC families. Whether we are immigrants or US-born, the pandemic is affecting all of us in some ways. It's attacking everyone. As human beings, we should have empathy with one another, no matter your religion, race, status, or language. We are asking you to recognize our dignity and our humanity. Thank you so much for the opportunity, sir.
Thank you, Ingrid. And Ms. Mukman.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Mendelson and Councilmember Gray. It is my pleasure, as an Events DC Community Grant Program recipient, to appear before the Council Committee on the Whole FY2021 Budget Oversight Hearing on behalf of Events DC Community Grant Program. My name is Carol Mukman, and I am co-founder and president of the Organization for Training Others in Need, a 28-year-old nonprofit organization. Often is an award-winning program that has successfully served hundreds of residents of the District of Columbia with its training and job placement programs for adults and youth. Our award-winning summer youth arts programs have also distinguished themselves. Often's mission is to provide programs and activities that encourage diverse artistic expression to all residents of the district and allow them to experience the culturally relevant, rich history and culture of our city. For small, community-based nonprofits like Often, Events DC's Community Grant Program is a godsend. Its funding allows us to recruit and compensate talented, young DC residents to work in an exciting growth industry like theater with our children from all wards who are paired with our seasoned volunteer staff. Because of Events DC funding, more than 35 youth in last summer session were able to perform their closing program at the iconic arena stage. This was priceless exposure. The smiles on their faces said it all, along with the wonderful full-page newspaper write-up they received from the Afro-American newspaper. That opportunity allowed our youth to demonstrate the acting and theater skills they had honed over the six-week program. In my opinion, Events DC performs an important and vital service to the residents of the District of Columbia by filling a gap for small, community-based organizations like Often. We are grateful for our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, each of you. And I'm going to reiterate what I had said earlier, and that is, some of you did not give us copies of your statement. Some of you did, but those of you who didn't, if you would, please, so that we have it for the record. And again, written statements can be submitted by email to cow@dccouncil. And as I indicated earlier, I will be asking Mr. Odell to say more with regard to the funding that Events DC voted to get out the door. Mr. Lazir, because you're knowledgeable of the budget, given your experience with the Fiscal Policy Institute, I wanted to just probe you a bit on your thinking. You had suggested, I believe you suggested that we could tap our reserves and increase taxes, and I wanted to press you on each. With regard to the reserves, I believe that three of the four reserve funds are in play right now. So what more would you do?
Thanks for the question, Chairman Mendelson. I'll be honest, as I read the budget documents, it wasn't entirely clear what was happening to all of them, but I would want to, my goal, I think the appropriate use of our reserves would be to use half of the 1.4 billion in reserves that are, that we've built up through this year, over the next two years, between fiscal year '20 and '21. And for all of them, I would change the reserve requirements that require rapid repayment. I know that some other repayment requirements were changed, but not fully eliminated. And for one of the reserves, I know it's going to have to be repaid over the next four years. If we eliminated that requirement, that we didn't have to repay it immediately, that would also free up more resources. I would want to make sure the Working Capital Fund is also available, even though it's not normally seen as a rainy-day fund. I would want to use that in this crisis, with the net goal of using roughly $700 million of our 1.4 billion over the next two years and waiving any requirement in the financial plan period.
And waiving any requirement?
Yeah, I mean, the normal process, the normal process in most states that have rainy-day funds, from the research I've done, is they use the reserves when needed, which makes sense, and they don't set any timeframe for repayment. They start to repay when the economy recovers and they return to surplus and require future surpluses be devoted to replenishment. To me, that's a sounder fiscal policy than saying we have to repay it when we don't know how long the damage is going to be.
We have four funds that make up the rainy day or the reserves, and one of them is cash. And my understanding is that the cash is being used to help us with liquidity, and so it is in use right now. And this is contingency, which, understanding is, what has been used to fund COVID-related public health expenses so far. And it may be reimbursed by federal money. As you know, we didn't get the full amount that all the states got, and our expenditures will be on par with other states. So the contingency is in play. And then there's a fiscal stabilization reserve fund, which is being used entirely. It's $212 million, and that's being used entirely in fiscal year '21. When the mayor presented, when the mayor presented her budget, I hesitated because I think it was then, not two weeks earlier, when the CFO presented his reserve, his revenue estimates. The chief financial officer made a point that if we were to tap the reserves any further, it would likely reduce our bond rating. Do you agree, or do you think that shouldn't be an issue?
Sure, I guess I want to make two comments. One is that we do have a working capital fund, and we're using it now for cash flow purposes, but we don't have to. In the past, when we had cash flow needs, we do temporary borrowing. And given that interest rates now are at rock-solid low rates, it only makes sense to do temporary borrowing for cash flow purposes so that we could, in fact, shift the Working Capital Fund, whatever it's called, to actually being part of our COVID relief efforts. Even when we had higher interest rates, we only spent a few million dollars a year on temporary borrowing interest costs. It just seems like it's a bargain to do temporary borrowing so that we can free up the Working Capital Fund. As to the question about our bond rating, it's, of course, a judgment call. The CFO doesn't exactly know what the rating agencies would do. I don't know what the rating agencies would do. I can tell you that in 2019, Moody's put out an analysis of the strength of cities, states' abilities to get through the recession, and the main thing they looked at was likely revenue drops and the size of the reserves that would be available to cover those revenue drops. So I interpret that to say that the bond rating agencies understand that fiscal stability matters, that you build up a reserve when times are good, and that it's fine to use the reserves. It's, in fact, fiscally responsible, because the alternative to using reserves is, of course, raising taxes or cutting services, neither of which are necessarily the first place to go.
I got lost a little there with regard to, I mean, the CFO was pretty clear that he thought that if we reduce, I believe that with this budget, we would have reserves equal to something like 50 days. He thought if it went below that, that we would lower the bond rating. Are you?
Yeah, I guess I don't, I mean, you know, again, I don't want to challenge his interpretation. It is all speculative. It's hard to believe that in the work, in the middle of a depression-era economic crisis, that the bond rating agencies would say you have to have 50 days' worth of cash on hands. It just, it seems likely that many states will be tapping their reserves down to zero or close to zero, and that, in fact, that's okay to do. I'm only recommending that we use half of the reserves over two years, leaving 50% still for FY22 and beyond. To me, it just seems like a reasonable compromise, and I would be shocked if the bond rating agencies saw that as fiscally irresponsible. It just seems like common sense to me.
Now, you also mentioned taxes, although a moment ago you said that taxes shouldn't be the first place we should go. But in your testimony, you do talk about taxes. You mentioned the QHTC, but you speak of tax loopholes in the plural. Are there others?
Sure, I think the QHTC is probably the most prominent tax loophole I can think of right now because it's been on the books, books for 20 years, and until recently, no one really looked at whether it was making a difference. And when we did, discovered that it was doing nothing to expand our economy. So I think letting that sit on the books now is just terrible fiscal policy and, you know, fiscally irresponsible, particularly at a time when those funds are needed. There are other loopholes that I have in mind as well. And we have a grocery store tax credit that's intended to bring grocery stores, you know, in underserved communities east of the river, and it just hasn't done that. It's not an enormous tax benefit, but we could get rid of that. We have loopholes in our combined reporting tax policy that allows this year, multi-state corporations to get extra deductions that I don't think are needed. I believe we should get rid of that deduction. We actually have delayed that deduction, but it's now coming on the books this year. But we shouldn't let it happen. That's another loophole that I would get rid of as well.
Other tax, those were tax loopholes. Are there tax increases, property tax, income tax?
I think they're definitely worth considering, given the scale of the challenges that we face. I mean, the fact is that a millionaire in the District of Columbia pays an income tax rate that is less than half a percentage point higher than someone whose earnings are $60,000. At a time when so many people are suffering, if your income is still above $1 million, it feels like it's not unreasonable to say that we need your help to support this city's economy and our struggling residents in the middle of this pandemic.
Does it matter whether our rate is competitive with surrounding jurisdictions to which people can easily move? I believe our income tax rate for the highest bracket is higher, substantially higher than Maryland or Virginia.
It's not actually substantially higher than Maryland. It is higher than Virginia. But every year, the chief financial officer does an analysis of our taxes in the district here compared to other parts of the region. And consistently, at the income levels, they look at DC ranks lowest when you combine income, property, and other taxes, because the property tax rates and policies in the suburbs are much, much higher than in the District of Columbia. But there's also just lots and lots of research that shows that people, particularly high-income people, do not move in response to changes in income tax rates. There was important studies in California, which has an 11% marginal tax rate. Our top tax rate is less than 9%. There was an important study when New Jersey raised its income tax and found that even though it had major metro areas on the border with Pennsylvania, that people didn't move. It's just not backed by any analysis that people move in any significant way. People like living in the city for a reason. They're rooted here. Their house is here. Their family's here. I thought that they would get up and move due to a small change in the taxes. Just because it's not really common sense, and it's not borne out by the research.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions for you. Thank you for that. And I thank each of you for your testimony. Thanks. We're going to turn now to the government witnesses. So take a moment while folks are exited from the witness table, and, but everybody can continue to attend. And we will bring in first Ron Mason, who's the president of the University of the District of Columbia.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning. Why don't you proceed? And you have some folks with you?
I do. I have, let me just give you the list of names here. Troy Stovall, Chief Operating Officer. Munetsi Musara, who is our representative from the Office of the Chief Financial Officer. Eric Thompson, our vice president over the real estate and real estate unit. Deborah Sullivan, Talent Management. And Lawrence Potter, Chief Academic Officer. And I assume that we have some board members who are listening as guests as well.
Okay, and you have a presentation as in a slideshow?
I do. I thought, given the format, it would be more effective for us to walk through a PowerPoint, which we can share on the screen. And in the long run, I think, will answer a lot of the questions that we anticipate would be put on the table, and it may actually save some time if you can give us a few extra minutes, maybe one or two, to work through it.
Okay, you know, the virtual platform can become after a while a little tiresome, so don't go too long. If you hear a thump, it's because I've fallen off my chair. I do want to correct something that I had misstated earlier. If I remember correctly, the mayor's proposed budget for next year for the university is $165,790,000. Really, your budget, not her budget. But included within that is the subsidy, which is what she is proposing to spend out of the city's budget, and that would be $90,303,000. And that, I believe, is pretty flat from the current year. So subsidy is $90 million.
Correct.
And proceed.
Thank you. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Second, let me thank you for the opportunity to listen to those witnesses. Having listened to them, it just reminded me how much UDC is a part of the district and how much the district is a part of UDC. But it also reminded me why our strategic plan is called the Equity Imperative, because all of the issues that were raised by almost all of those speakers are things that we struggle with every day at the university. And so, and even more so now, since the virus has impacted so many of our students. Having said that, oh, let me also recognize Chair, Councilmember Gray, who I think is on, and thank him for his support of the, is he not on? I thought he was earlier.
I believe he is present, but he may not be on the microphone at the moment.
Well, that's okay. Well, let me just thank him for his support, as well as the rest of the council who may be listening, because the council's been very supportive of our work, and Councilman Gray, in particular, with the HEI program, which has helped us train infant and toddler workers in ESL, in the English as a Second Language program. So having said that, I'm going to bring up the PowerPoint. And if Evan will give me the opportunity to share it, I'll share it. Let me see how this works now. Here. So are we up and running, Mr. Chairman?
I see, I see something.
University of the District of Columbia fiscal year 2021 proposed operating and capital budgets.
Correct.
And so, this will take about 15 slides, and if I need to speak faster, just let me know. But a couple of points we wanted to make here. One, which is that, you know, we embrace what the district is going through in terms of their proposals to deal with the aftermath of this virus. And so DC Hope is one of our themes as well. But also, by the end of the presentation, we want to talk a bit about how we see the role how we see the role of the university in that process, which is why hashtag My U D C is also a theme that we want to talk about today. We know we're in this together, and everybody has to make sacrifices. But in our case, we have to do that by also maintaining critical services for our students and protecting the most vulnerable members of our community. In order to help the district meet its budgetary goals, we reduce spending this year by about two point eight million dollars. And then, in next year's budget, we reduced recurring expenses by about two million dollars. But our goal is to continue to move forward on the Equity Imperative because what we realize is that the goals of the Equity Imperative are important even before the pandemic hit, but now are even more so now that it's here. And so, our priority is to make sure that we become a sustainable source of business-ready talent is to maintain our core functions. And so, as we went through the budget reduction process, we made sure to to limit the impact on things that affected the students in the classroom and outside of the classroom. We are going to transform the campus into a low-risk, low-health-risk environment. And we'll talk about that some because we know at some point, people are going to have to come to campus either out of necessity or choice, and we want to be as safe a campus as possible. We have vulnerable students, which are many of the people that testified today. They're children. And so, we have to set aside resources for them. We also are going to talk about the high-profile and high-priority workforce pipelines that we are developing and would like to develop in an even quicker fashion. And then, it's important for us not to lose ground on implementing the Equity Imperative. And so, just to walk through how the budget works quickly, if you look at, let me see if I can move this out of the way here. Here we go. So you can see that since two thousand and fifteen, our budget has increased in the recurring funds, that are the funds that we consider our base budget that we can count on from year to year, have gone up about three point four percent since two thousand and fifteen. If you add in the one-time funds, which is what the district subsidy consists of, the base budget plus the one-time funds, then it's gone up about four point five percent. And as you can see, it was ninety million, three hundred and three thousand in two thousand and twenty. And it'll be the same in two thousand and twenty-one as recommended. But the point here is that, is two things, Mr. Chairman. One, even though the subsidy stays the same, by contributing two million dollars out of our recurring funds and swapping it basically for one-time money, the subsidy remains the same, but the proportion of funds that are in our base, that is, the recurring funds, has actually gone down, but the one-time funds has replaced it. But in any event, we feel fortunate that in this environment, our subsidy has basically stayed level. And then, the other point we'd like to make here is that even still, and we made this point before, of the local funds that our budget is made up of, only one point, it's only one point two percent of the local funds budget of the district, but the national averages are about five percent. And if the Equity Imperative was fully funded, we think that just getting that one point two percent up to about two percent would actually enable us to get the work done that the district needs us to do. This is the capital budget, and it's busy. But the big story here is that, you know, from what we requested to what is provided is a significant difference. But also, most of the funding here is in the out years, that is, in twenty-four, twenty-six. And here is a comparison of what we are, the blue in twenty. The gold is what our top five requests would have been funded at, if funded. And then, the gray is what is being recommended now. And you can see, there's a pretty big difference. And remember, when we did the analysis of what the campus needed, it was really about a seven hundred million dollar capital budget over time. And but we don't know how it's going to change now with the COVID environment. But just to put it in perspective for you, remember that one, the five things that were highest on our list was forty-two fifty Connecticut renovation. That's not going to happen in this budget. The BACAS expansion, which was important because the eight oh one lease expires in twenty-seven. And so, we have to have a place to move the community college to, and that's not going to happen. We will be able to work on roofs and elevators, which is a good thing. And we will be able to do some infrastructure upgrades. Sorry about that typo there. It's the first time I caught it. But in any event, we have to transform the campus now to the COVID reality. And so, we're working through what that looks like and using the infrastructure money that we have in place to be able to do that. And then, third, you know that we look forward to buying the facility at thirty-one hundred Martin Luther King as the base for our workforce activities, workforce training activities in Ward Eight. We do have a lease there for the next few years, but that purchase is not in this budget either. And, you know, you can walk through or look through these items, but it's basically what I just said. Some of the things we're going to be able to do is continue to modernize the campus, the library renovation, some of the swing space we'll be able to pay for, fireboard farms will get an upgrade, we'll be able to make the campus look better as far as the pavers and the plaza. And we'll be able to do some small projects on campus just to keep the fifty-year-old infrastructure up and running. The moral of all of this, which is, I guess, good news, is that despite the challenges, despite the lower level of funding compared to what the Equity Imperative envisioned, we still continue to make progress. You know, our nursing programs now are back online, and the R N, the V S N, is converting to a, an online format. We have, all of our programs are fully accredited now. We've been able to expand the campus footprint. Our grant programs are continuing to grow. You know, the Gallup partnership was worth a million dollars to us. We're building out a technology pipeline with Amazon Web Services. Some of Brookings' top scholars have been teaching on our campus for the last year. We've been winning awards at NASA. And so, you know, at the end of the day, to be able to have these kinds of rankings at the bottom here, which are important to us, given the type of institution that we are, you know, to be the number one best and affordable mechanical engineering program in the country, you know, is a big deal. To be the number one best of the fifty most affordable business schools in the country, and to be the seventh best affordable engineering school are all things that we think bode well for the future of U D C. The big thing also, and it really is timely, because with the one-time money we've been getting from the district, we've been able to significantly upgrade our technology, infrastructure, hardware, software, and capacity of our people. And so, you know, we've done new servers. Everything is in the cloud now. We have twenty-three interactive touchscreens that are going to be very helpful as we go to more of an online delivery mechanism. We've upgraded all of our computers, or seventy percent, to Windows ten. We've purchased new computers and servers, and the computers are for students and faculty and staff. And the telephone system, which is not the greatest in the world, is getting improved as well. But in this environment, to say that, you know, we have a modern now technology infrastructure, added to the fact that for the past three years, we've been training our faculty in online course delivery and course construction, it really did enable us to make the transition at, you know, in an emergency situation from in-classroom to online in a way that was, that, whose efficiency surprised even me. And so, but here was the opportunity cost. When you look at what we wanted to fund or what our request was as far as recurring funding and one-time funding that had to be taken out of the budget because of the viral impact on the overall district budget. We wanted to make sure that our learning environments were conducive to the type of learning that our students needed. That would have come in very handy in this reality. And just to show you the difference between what our, the people who take care of our buildings make about five dollars per square foot, that's how much we have devoted to maintaining our fifty-year-old infrastructure. The national average is about fifteen dollars per square foot. We wanted more money for student success in the classroom and outside of the classroom. That didn't happen. We wanted to focus on these three pipelines, these three talent pipelines, healthcare, which is obviously more important than it ever was, technology, and teachers. And we're going to still build out these pipelines, but we were looking for money to help us accelerate the process. You know, we settled our union issues with the faculty, and we promised them that we'd ask for some cost of living increase this year. We've made the ask, but it's not going to happen. And then, we wanted to also continue to improve our technology infrastructure. And all of this would have really strengthened our hand. And we also think strengthened the district's hand if we had been able to pursue these opportunities as noted. And then, finally-
If I can interrupt, so that's about eight point seven million dollars that you requested that is not funded.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then, finally, you know, the biggest, biggest value for all of us is our students. And our students need support in so many different ways. And the biggest element in our ability to support them has been what I, I'm calling it the chairman's challenge. I don't know if it's the chairman's challenge or the council's challenge, but let me thank you for it because it's done what it was supposed to do, which was stimulated private giving. We've been able to match this, I think, for the last three years now. But it's also allowed us to take care of students who need that support. And without it, they would have been in dire straits for sure. And so, finally, just to sort of bring home our post-COVID value as an institution in the future of the district, we can, we can reset ourselves as a safe and certified learning center. I think we have a real strength as a hybrid learning model. This summer, all of our faculty will be certified to teach online. And we expect by the fall, all of our, all of our faculty who are teaching in the fall will also be certified. We are building out these fast-track pathways to multiple credentials in in areas of high need for the district's future. Our technology is in place. Our business processes have improved. And we think that, you know, we'll be able to be fairly efficient and productive in a telework-based environment. And so, we continue to build a public higher education model of urban student success because that's where the bulk of the talent is. And we want to turn them into reliable sources of business-ready talent because we understand our role and responsibility to the district and its citizens as the public institution of higher learning in and for the nation's capital. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, me or my team.
Thank you, President Mason. A ten-minute round, and I believe there are two councilmembers who are also in the room. Let me see if I can go through some of these questions quickly. Regarding the fundraising match, if the, if we were to repeat that again for next year, for the current year, it was two to one, the limit of one point five million dollars. So if you raised three million, you'd get an additional one point five. Because the pandemic interfered with fundraising, we revised that for this year. But if we were to do that for next year, are those parameters reachable? The idea is it's supposed to be a stretch goal. Is it reasonable?
I think the pandemic will make it more difficult. And, you know, just to refer you back to the testimony of some of the prior witnesses when they talked about some of the structural challenges to being able to raise funds, you know, we have those challenges as well. Now, despite the latter, we've been able to meet the goal. But I would certainly request that it become a one-to-one because, you know, there's just more unknowns than knowns in this reality. And I'd hate to shortchange our students because of our disability or inability to be able to double the challenge.
Are you getting federal funding related to the COVID nineteen legislation?
Yes, sir. We had, we got the funds available to all universities, which was about, our share was about three point six million dollars. And one point eight million of that had to go directly to students, half of it, based on their needs. And it couldn't be used for tuition or anything related to university expenses. It had to be their personal needs. The other one point eight million, we can use, but it has to be used for Corona-related expenses on campus. So that's the first pot, three point six million. And then, there's a second pot of seven point seven million, which is H B C U-specific fund. And the rules on that are still a little fuzzy, but generally speaking, we believe that it will have to be used also for Corona-related expenses. And just if I can go back to the student part, you should know that that was only available, as near as we can tell, to Title IV eligible students, which meant that foreign students, undocumented students could not receive those funds. And so, we had to do a private fundraiser to try to make a pool available to those students.
That was with regard to the three point six?
Yes, sir, correct.
So there were two pots of federal money?
Yes.
The there were some large shifts in your proposed budget that I wanted to ask about, and I want to try to get through this in seven minutes. Your proposed budget includes a net personal services increase of two million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand. What is that increase for?
In financial services? Two point-
Personal services. And if you need, back to me, that would be okay.
Yeah, we'll get back to you because I know we have an increase in financial services that is for two point nine million, but that's the reserve for the N E A, to fund the N E A increases. Personal services of two point, if anybody on the-
Two point nine seven five?
Yes, sir.
That's to cover the N E A increase?
Correct.
If you would get back, it's on page H seventy-two. U D C's proposed budget includes a net personal services increase of two million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. What is this increase for?
Okay.
Second question. Your budget includes six point seven four one million dollar enhancement and one-time funds to support U D C's facilities and I T infrastructure initiatives. Is this one time?
That is, well, yes, that was the one-time funds that was put into the budget by the mayor before we took out the two point, the two million dollars in recurring funds. And so, those funds were dedicated to I T improvements and facilities improvements. Six point seven.
And that's, so that's on the operating, in the operating budget, even though it's going for-
No, it's one time. We're not, we're not going to be able to use it for operations.
Yeah, but it's not capital money.
It's not capital money. It is in the operating budget, correct. We're not going to, we can't use it for recurring expenses.
Yeah. Why is there a decrease of three point six three nine million in academic supports?
So that was more reallocation than decrease. A lot of it had to do with the way we were funding the adjunct professors. They were in one big personnel services pool, and now they've been distributed out among the various units. And so, you'd have to sort of work your way through to see where it all went. But at the end of the day, the academic affairs budget did not go down. And again, my folks are on. If I'm wrong, they can, they're welcome to jump in.
Overall, the academic budget did not go down?
I don't think so.
Can you explain the four point seven seven eight million dollar decrease in causes?
Yes. So with all of our grants, we now, as you know, have a new Vice President for Research and an Office of Research. And so, part of their job was to actually scrub the grant's budget to make sure it was reflecting reality. It helps us track them better, and it also helps us not paint a false picture to ourselves primarily. And so, in going through that, you know, they identified some grants that had been sitting there, had never been funded, some that were mistimed, and others that, like the A R I money, the PAD money, which was a grant we used to get to do work for the- which was a grant we used to get to do work for the Department of Housing in the District, which was 1.7 million, actually went away. And so at the end of the day, the entire grant's budget decreased about 10 million dollars, which was a big factor in why the overall budget went down. But that was more understanding better what was there and accurately reflecting what should be booked as revenue for '21 than anything else. And it was because we have a new office that's there to do that now. The other thing I should note is that those entries were made in August. And so there's actually been a lot of, a lot more activity since then. And when you get the updated version of that, you'll see that, you know, there are more grants that have come in since that August, August booking.
You're saying the budget that we got a week ago, 10 days ago, in this case reflects entries from last August?
No, in this case, it reflects the, the updates that were calculated last August, correct? So there may be some modification as we go forward. But that was the best information we had.
So if you, if you have better information, we should get it before we mark up the budget.
You will. Chairman wants to say something, so.
Chairman, this is Menetum's side of the CFO. So what we're saying is that during formulation, when we worked to sort of realign the grant's budget to the actual amounts that were being received, there were some grants during formulation where it was not clear whether the university would be receiving them or not. I think there's specifically two big ones. There was 1.5 in Title III SAFRA. And then there was another 1.2, 1.3 million from the Department of Agriculture. So because those funds weren't solidified and we weren't sure whether they were going to be obtained, we did not put them in formulation. Because we wanted to really align the budget to what we knew the expenditures would be. And so since then, we were alerted in August that, sorry, prior to August, we were alerted, I think a month or two ago, that these funds were going to be received in '21. So all we'll do is request that budget authority when the GAN is presented in FY '21.
Well, why don't we fix it now when we have the budget before us?
Okay, we'll put it in there then.
If you would follow up with Ms. Setlow on my staff so that we have the correct numbers or the most up to date numbers?
Understood.
Thank you. And my last question is, there's a decrease of 940,000 dollars in the community colleges academic affairs line. Why?
That, I believe, was shifting around in funds. The overall budget hasn't gone down. And I'm going to ask for some backup if I need it here. The chief, chief, the chief community college officer sort of reshuffled the deck, especially when the workforce unit had to be restructured. And so if you look closely within the budget, there are positions that have been moved around. Some, some brought on, some eliminated. But at the end of the day, I don't think the budget went down at all.
My time is up. The, I had some capital questions, but your presentation on capital was quite helpful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gray, if you are on, do you have any questions? Councilmember Silverman, have you joined us and do you have any questions? Give me just a moment. Apparently there are no other council members who have questions at this. I may follow up with you, President Mason, with regard to some other details on the capital.
Yes, sir.
That I understand that better. I'm glad that this budget is, even though the times could be better, that this budget is so stable for you. Unlike a few years ago when we were figuring out how we could help.
Yes, sir.
So thank you, and thank you to your team.
Thank you, and we appreciate it. And stay safe, stay safe.
Well, you too as well. I excuse you all, and we'll turn to the Commission on Arts and Humanities.
Thank you, team.
So we're turning now to the Commission on Arts and Humanities. And I have listed Kate Kendall, who is the chairperson of the, of the commission, and Haran Sarek Brawn, who is the acting executive director. How do you want to proceed? Ms. Kendall, do you want to go first?
Yes, thank you.
And good, good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson. My name is Kate Kendall. I am chair of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. It is an honor to come before the committee of the whole today as you consider the proposed budget for the commission for the fiscal year 2021. We've put together plans for next year. And as we've done that, we are, we are, that we're very appreciative that the mayor has preserved their dedicated funding. We've concentrated on the following major points. What impact can we have now? And how can we support the recovery of the arts and cultural section when this is over? With that in mind, we've concentrated our funds in general operating and artist fellowships, knowing that these funds will have the greatest flexibility and impact. We have waived matching grants for most categories, and we have scaled back budgets for other programs in order to create a relief fund for the sector. It has been a roller coaster for this agency, as it has been for everyone. From navigating the challenges of working remotely to making contingency plans should we be confronted with a reduced budget due to a shortfall of sales tax revenue. Throughout this time, our staff has worked long hours and coped with the changes. We are indebted to their commitment and understanding of how to respond to the arts community. Through our committee structure, they have worked with commissioners as we all strive to create plans to invest in the arts and humanities, always keeping inclusion, diversity, equity and access top of mind. I'm sure all of us have been amazed at the creativity shown on endless YouTube and Zoom broadcasts that have entertained us and kept us sane. And perhaps more importantly, given us cause to praise and pause and reflect on the world. Never have the arts been so obviously a source of camaraderie and inspiration and community. We applaud the sector that we serve for the inventiveness and the willingness to continue to share their talents with all of us. A recent news article stated, "We need a variety of fields to navigate our way through global health crisis." They all deserve our support. Science and medicine are the disciplines that help to save lives. The humanities and the arts help us understand why that lives are worth saving in the first place. I'm honored to chair a commission whose mission is to invest in artistic excellence. Never has it seemed so important. I thank you for your time today. And now I would like to introduce our acting executive director, Haran Saraka Brawn, who will speak further on the agency's proposed fiscal '21 budget. Thank you again.
I thank you, Ms. Kendall. A director?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning, committee members and staff, members of the public. Thank you for this opportunity to testify before you today on the proposed budget for the Commission on Arts and Humanities for fiscal year 2021. My name is Heran Sarak Abraham, acting executive director for the commission. Fiscal year '21 will be the third straight year in which the commission has been funded by a dedicated percentage of tax revenues collected. In each of these years, the agency's operating budget has increased, even in the proposed budget year for FY '21, in which our local appropriation has been zeroed out. We recognize that the, with the ongoing state of emergency, those local funds are likely needed elsewhere for the district's response and recovery efforts. We also know that the district's arts and cultural sector has been a significant driver of the city's economic growth and development over the years, accounting for approximately 8.4% of gross state product. Any recovery of the local economy must, by necessity, include a recovery of the arts and cultural sector. We further believe that the arts and humanities will be of utmost necessity in helping our residents adjust mentally and emotionally to life post pandemic, an intrinsic value not measured in dollars and percentages. The proposed FY '21 budget of over 38.7 million will certainly be extremely needed in addressing these areas of recovery. It's also a testament to our city's leaders in light of the fact that city and state arts agencies in other parts of the country are facing drastic cuts to their budgets. And in some instances are at risk of being totally defunded altogether by their respective governments. However, we also understand that this proposed budget is one based on forecasted tax revenues and as such is subject to variation with actual, with actual tax revenues collected over the course of the year. This was the case in March, when the Office of the Chief Financial Officer expressed concerns over a revenue shortfall across the district due to the economic impacts related to COVID-19. This agency followed the advice of the OCFO at the time and paused any new spending to await updated data to paint a more accurate picture of the agencies and the district's financial position. While the district government as a whole is faced with a shortfall of, in excess of 700 million in both the current and upcoming fiscal years, the commission is one of only a few agencies that will not face an immediate budgetary reduction, at least for now. Finding ourselves in such a position of good fortune demands an increased sense of gravitas of the agency. We do not know what life will look like post pandemic, and we do not know what the arts and cultural sector will look like. Nobody can know that at this time. So we must continue to be thoughtful and as empirical as possible in our plans. As part of the recent CARES Act, the National Endowment for the Arts distributed funds to each of the state arts agencies for the purposes of making relief grants to the nonprofit arts sector. The commission, as the state arts agency for the District of Columbia, received 421,300 dollars in federal funds from the Arts Endowment, which were in the process of awarding as grants of 2,500 to individual artists and 3,000 to nonprofit organizations with annual budgets of under 250,000 that have been impacted financially by COVID-19. Next week, we will begin the process of soliciting applications for FY '21 grant programs. The entire grant making process takes a minimum of 13 weeks just to make the award notification to selected recipients. And it's our goal to get funds dispersed to our grantees as soon as possible after the start of the new fiscal year, so that they may have cash in hand for their expenses. We have made some significant modifications to our grant programs for FY '21 in response to feedback received from our grantees and the arts and cultural sector at large. Traditionally, most of our grants to organizations have required a one to one financial match on the part of the grantee. That requirement was waived in April for most of our current FY '20 grantees and will again be waived for most of our FY '21 grant programs. This will allow grantees more flexibility with their organizational funds by not encumbering them as a match for a particular grantor project. We'll be pausing three grant programs from FY '21, Sister Cities for Individuals and for Organizations, and the Liftoff Grant. We'll also be reducing the allocation to our projects, events and festivals grants. Using these savings, we'll be able to increase the allocation to our Arts and Humanities Fellowship Grant Program, which provides near unrestricted general funds to individuals and raise the minimum award of that program from 2,500 to 5,000 dollars. And in FY '21, our East of the River Grant Program will be restricted to applicant organizations that are headquartered and based in communities east of the Anacostia River. Finally, we are establishing a relief fund within our budget, which we hope will allow us to respond to future needs of the arts and cultural sector as we continue to move through and ultimately past COVID-19. Mr. Chairman, all of the above modifications are made to grant programs that fall within the Arts and Humanities cohort, legislatively defined in the agency's budget. I believe there may be other potential temporary modifications to support recovery in budget areas such as in facilities and buildings, capital projects, which I'd be happy to discuss further with you. In closing, I'd like to take a moment to thank my staff for their hard work and exemplary commitment to our grantees and to public service. I'd also like to extend my heartfelt empathy and acknowledgement of all of the city's artists and cultural workers. This industry has been hit extraordinarily hard by this situation, like so many others. And it may be one of the last ones to return to some sense of normalcy. The performing arts in particular may not be in full operations again for another one to two years, not just here, but across the globe. And so to all of them, we at the commission see you, we hear you, and we're continuing to work for you. Thank you for your time, Chairman Mendelson. I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have. I'm joined here at the commission's office by our agency's resource analyst, Brian Allende, and our agency's fiscal officer, Brighta Highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, each of you. And thanks to everybody on the staff at the commission, as well as the members of the commission. So I do have a few questions. I see Councilmember Gray, so put me on a 10 minute clock. The, Ms. Kendall, in your statement, you said we've scaled back budgets for other programs in order to create a relief fund for the sector. Can you say more about the relief fund and that was for the current fiscal year, correct? And you're muted.
I was referring to FY '21. We, we looked at, because we wanted to give the maximum amount of money to the maximum people with maximum flexibility. We looked at all of our cohorts. We pretty much put them on life support. We were able to trim that part of the budget, take those savings and put them into what we'll call a relief fund. We first put more into GOS and into individual fellowships, but we reserved some percentage for a relief fund just because we don't know what next year looks like, and we thought we should have some undesignated money in our pocket so we could respond to the community as we see fit next year.
Okay, and that, so I misunderstood, and that's for FY '21?
That's right. And, okay, I will, I will say too that I think our GOS, because it's unrestricted, it goes to organizations, it can be used as relief, as well as our fellowships that goes to individuals. All of that money is unrestricted, and they're able to use it however they want. It just seemed prudent to have a little bit of undesignated money in our pocket.
Okay.
We can decide to give that to more people. Go ahead.
I, I want to ask a question concerning the revised budget for fiscal year '20. The budget is cut a little under 1 million dollars in local funds. So what got cut?
Well, I know that we were very glad that we were able to get the grants that we had promised to the grantees. I think the cuts came internally, and our director could probably speak more to those because I think she's the one that had to make them. But they, they weren't cut out of what we had promised to the grant community.
Okay, our director?
Most of our grants cuts, Randy, do you want to get it?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Brian Allende. I'm the resource analyst for the agency. The 983,000 dollars that has been targeted for reduction is coming from our local appropriation, specifically in the other side, other charges and services and contractual services portion of the budget.
In '41?
Yes, sir.
And it was just unobligated money? Leftover money?
At the present time, it was unobligated. The agency had intentions or some spending plans with that funding, but because of the pandemic and everything that hit, the, we were unable to actually encumber those funds at this time.
Let me run, in about six minutes, Director Sarek Brawn. The proposed FY '21 budget. The proposed FY twenty one budget proposes to decrease by one FTE each, personnel, communications, and performance management. Are these cut positions, or have they just been shifted to other lines?
These are positions that have moved. Nine FTEs were cut from the local fund. And so we have reshuffled, we've absorbed that into our dedicated taxes. And we have moved positions within. We are requesting only one new FTE position for next year.
I got confused. You said nine FTEs were cut?
Nine FTEs have moved from local to dedicated funds.
Oh. And so these changes I just mentioned in personnel communications and performance management is part of that shifting?
It's part of the shifting, yes, sir. We've picked up a couple of positions in the grants department. It's a reallocation of resources.
So then you increased legal services and customer service by one FTE each. Are these new positions or shifted positions? The answer is?
Shifted.
Shifted. So one position is actually shifted from the personnel activity. The other position is shifted from the communications, communications activity. And then we've actually increased an FTE in the fifty-ten, Activity Fifty-ten, which was to address the caseload and workloads for all of the grants management. We we actually added a grants management specialist to that, to that activity.
That's a brand-new FTE as opposed to shifting?
That is correct, sir.
It's one new shift.
No, it's a new, it's a new, it's an increase from fiscal year twenty. Fiscal year twenty, we add total FTEs is thirty-four, and fiscal year twenty-one, we're proposing thirty-five FTEs.
Okay. Alright, so I had a similar question, but I think you've answered the question. Let me see, you have a large increase in regular pay continuing full-time at Comsource Group eleven, and a large decrease in regular pay other, that's CSG twelve. Can you explain?
Yes, sir. The increases as a result of a conversion from a not-to-exceed or a term appointment to a career service appointment. And so when that happens, the the career service position are funded out of Object Core, Comsource Group eleven.
Yes. That's good. I vaguely remember questioning why there were term employees a year ago. Because I think when folks are on the staff for a while, they ought to be continuing full-time.
Absolutely.
During the transition to independence last, late last summer, there was concern raised about there might have to, you might have to pay for things like HR and facilities and all kinds of MOUs. Have there been new charges related to that?
There have been no new charges. We are making the transition. We've successfully began the first steps of creating our own HR unit within the agency in harmony with the DCHR regulations. We have received Personnel Authority to hire for the agency. And so we are moving on building our structure within the agency, but no new costs have been incurred.
Any issues with MOUs?
No issues thus far.
So that's all good?
Yes.
Right?
It's very good.
You were saying that with a very straight tone, but that's actually good.
Yes, I'm turning cartwheels within.
Good. In your budget for next year, you have a small amount of intra-district funds. What's that for?
The intra-district funds are for the Summer Youth Employment Program, SYEP, and for our MOU with Department of Parks and DPW Department of Public Works or Mural's DC.
Now, I don't remember exactly what the line was called in the current year budget, the FY twenty budget, but there was something like a million dollars for student foreign travel. You know what I'm thinking of?
Yeah.
Field trips experience.
Field trips experience. That would have been, yes, a local. It's actually two things. It's, there's a five hundred thousand, a little over five hundred thousand for a summer program, a summer's study abroad, a study abroad program. And there's a million dollars for field trip experiences, which is a local program for schoolchildren to attend art-related programs around the city.
Now, my understanding is that one of those was zeroed out, because it's going to be handled by another agency?
Both of them, both of them have been zeroed out. They're moved to OSI, yes.
Moved to OSI?
Yes.
Is that okay? Does that make sense? Did OSI would have that instead of UOL?
It was a policy decision. We fought, we fought for in the past for the field trips program. The mayor has been supportive of it. It was very successful as a program. But this year, there's a lot of scrambling around programming for for youth. Anyway, a lot of the programs are moving to virtual platforms. So it gives us a chance to think about how to do it next time around and maybe budget for it next year. But it it has been a very successful program when we were running it, so we'd like to continue it in some form.
Okay, so it's zeroed out for the moment. It's both of those, the field trips and the summer trips abroad have been moved to OSI.
Yes.
You're going to look at whether you want to come back with this next year?
The field trips especially, the study abroad, the, is it study abroad?
Study.
International study, okay. I'm sorry, I used to work in a study abroad program elsewhere, so I'm getting the two confused. The study abroad program was always a pass-through. We didn't conduct the programming for that. But the field trips program, we did conduct the program for. So the field trips would be the one that we'd be looking at re-bringing back next year.
Okay, let me turn to my colleague, Councilmember Gray. Do you have any questions? And you're muted, Mr. Gray.
All right, well, let me unmute.
You're unmuted.
I'm unmuted.
I can hear you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to spend a little time with the commission this morning. I've been a follower of the commission sometime since I was mayor. And by the way, I appreciated the comments by the president of UDC a little bit earlier, too, his expression of appreciation for what we've been trying to do to train teachers for working with infants and toddlers at the university. So I appreciate his acknowledgement of that, and I'll make a comment from Mr. Chairman. I I know that there are some new ways of doing things, which have been alluded to in the testimony in one way or the other today. And the the questions that I have, which will probably be much less than they might otherwise have been, will be, can go to either one, the chair or the director, whichever one he wants to answer is fine with me. One of, one of the things that I've heard, at least as this, as this new effort is being launched and executed, that we have a new cohort, right, the national, within the national, the, within the CIAH, within the Western Arts and Humanities. One of the questions that I've heard raised in the recent past is about equity and whether, in fact, there is equity, because there's some concern about, you know, how some organizations have been set aside to receive out of a particular pot, I think it's like twenty-eight percent of the, of the budget, of the commission's budget is going to a number of organizations. And that, I believe, is in perpetuity, and you all can correct me if that's, if that's not an accurate interpretation. But I would like to hear what safeguards have been put in place to preserve equity, especially since we have, let's say, you know, on the east side of the city, east end of the city, because I represent now Ward Seven on the east end, and we have Ward Eight there as well. I want to be able to accurately explain to those who raised questions with me exactly how equity is being preserved in assuring that those who are arts organizations or artists themselves have an opportunity to assure that the funds going to the east end of the city are being preserved in an equitable fashion. So go right ahead. Either one of you. Are you muted?
No. We have preserved the East of the River cohort for next year, and that budget has tripled in the time that I've been on the commission in the last four or five years. So I think there's been a real interest in making sure that that area is funded. Plus, next year, we said that all of it would go to people who reside in Ward Eight or Ward Seven. Whereas prior to that, we had set aside a certain portion for people who whose organizations were elsewhere, but they did work in Ward Seven or Eight. Next year, we're particularly saying that they have to be residents of Ward Seven and Eight.
That that is new, Ms. Kendall?
Yes, giving the whole thing to them. It may not be brand-new, but it's new as of several years. I thought I remembered that years ago, that was the case. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but next year it will be that, that case. So it's, it's dedicated more to the residents, and it's increased, and it's preserved for next year. We didn't cut it.
So when I, when I look at the numbers for the current year, for fiscal year twenty, how will they compare to the numbers that I will be looking at for fiscal year twenty-one with respect to allocations in Ward, Ward Seven and Ward Eight?
I'm not looking at numbers. Ron, do you want to speak to that? I think that they'll be at least the same, if not up, but our budget's going up, so the percentage may have gone up. But I'm, I'm not gonna, as I say, I'm not looking at numbers right now.
Okay, maybe, maybe the director or?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. The numbers have remained the same as last year for those particular grants, grants that are based in Ward Seven and Eight. But the question of equity is one that we are constantly honing. It's not a, you know, equity is not a destination. It's something that one has to work at every year, every cycle. We have the sort of the thirty thousand feet view of the district. And I think we need to remain balanced in our focus, so that that ecosystem where everyone gets enough to work and to be effective and to have an impact. Our, our, we, we keep all of those values in mind when we're funding. We have almost a combination of three grants that total about three million that would go to East of the River organizations and/or programming that that happens in East of the River. So it is a valid question. It is not one that we dismiss or take lightly. It's something that we are constantly, you know, sort of honing to make sure that that funding is equitable and our support is equitable across the board. And Councilmember Gray, I also want to, just on a personal note, say hello. I was appointed Deputy of the Office on African Affairs under you, and you've honored me with an award for public service, so greetings.
And congratulations on your appointment, too, your work at the commission. So I'll look forward to working closely, continue to work closely with the commission under your leadership, Director, and yours, Ms. Kendall. How are you all, there's not a huge amount of money in the scheme of things involved here, but how do you explain this to these arts organizations that they are being treated fairly at this stage? That money that's being allocated through this new cohort that's been established is being allocated equitably across the city, and especially to the artists and art organizations that are funded in Ward Seven and Eight.
The organizations with large budgets that ended up in the legislated National Capital Arts Cohort presented a particular set of issues to council. And their set of issues had to do with the size of their organizations, the economic activity that their organizations helped spur in the district, and not having received impactful grants over the years from the commission. And I think that's what led to this legislated solution of having part of the budget assigned to this cohort. I know that they do programming that is relevant to the arts landscape. They are addressing issues of diversity in their hiring practices. They are, their program content has that diversity built into it. So there is a particular kind of need that they presented and successfully got legislated, which doesn't mean the smaller-size organizations with community-based programming are not as important. So it's a value assigning issue where, you know, the small ones do just as important work as the big ones do, and our job is to make sure that our funding addresses their needs adequately. So it's, it's an ongoing thing, and I, I'd like to continue conversations with you if you have thoughts about how to do that better.
I would appreciate the opportunity to continue to talk about this, and I, I notice it's just twenty-eight percent the right number that I'm using as the allocation for this, this pool of grants going to the folks who are in this cohort. Is that, is that an accurate?
Yes, twenty-eight percent of the budget goes to the National Capital Arts Cohort at the moment.
And how many organizations will that go to this current year, Director?
So last year, this was the first year we did it, and it went to about twenty-two organizations.
And of the pool of grantees, that twenty-two represents what percentage of the grantees?
Our grantees in general this year were about six hundred and twenty, so it'd be about twenty of the six hundred and twenty, yeah.
It's a fairly small percentage of the organizations. Is that a fair analysis?
That's fair, yes. We, in our GOS, General Operating Support Grant, we fund about a hundred and thirty organizations. So now that the National Capital Arts Cohort has broken away from that, it would be another hundred and ten or so that we have in our portfolio.
Okay, I would really like to continue to discuss this with you, and I appreciate the work that you all are trying to do there to make this as fair as possibly is the case. But in the meantime, I'm not sure that that message is getting clearly to everybody. So I'd like to work with you and work with, you know, Ms. Kendall and the members of the commission around how we can equitably explain, explain the equity that's involved and how these grants are being awarded. So my time is up, Mr. Chairman. I thank you very much, and I will look forward to working with the director and the, and the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. And at the beginning of the hearing, when we heard from citizen witnesses, there were a number of witnesses from groups that are part of this National Capital Arts Cohort. And Paul Tetra from Ford Theater testified that prior to the current year, these groups got over, over thirty percent, it might even have been close to a third of the, of the grants budget, and now they're getting about twenty-eight percent. So they're actually getting a little bit less than they used to in the past. Kenyon McDuffie, you are here. Did you want to test, did you have questions?
I do, and let me thank you, Chairman, for, for an opportunity to ask a few questions and thank the chairperson and the director for their testimony. I, I wanted, I'm focused on really one, one thing. I hadn't planned to testify, to ask any questions today. But I'm happy that I was able to catch a glimpse of the hearing and ask a couple of questions. I wanted to ask about GoGo Music. As you all may know, the council As you all may know, the council passed legislation that I introduced to make Go-Go the official music of Washington, DC. And there's been a lot of celebration because of that and a lot of support for that effort. And I wanted to ask specifically, you know, especially, I think we're maybe just two or three days away from June, which is Black Music Month. Are there any funds specifically allocated to support Go-Go Music in the commission's budget for FY 2021?
Can I speak? Yes, we created a cohort just for Go-Go musicians in the individual fellowships grants. So before, that was just for artists in general, but we carved out a subsection just for Go-Go artists. So that is one thing we've done. Recently, when we had some NEA grants to give, we opened them up to people who had not already been grantees so that if there were Go-Go artists who could apply, they might not have already been a grantee, but that was open to them. And we're gonna really work with anyone who calls us and says they would like to apply for grant next year to help them figure out what the right avenue is for them to get some grant money from us and some support.
Appreciate that. Let me ask a follow-up. How much is the fellowship? So how much specifically is allocated for this cohort? Where it'll be set aside for Go-Go?
That has yet to be determined. It's based on the final budget, for one thing. But Huron, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. The Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program funds about eight or nine different art genres: dance, film, humanities, theater, visual arts, media arts, and so on. And so Go-Go will have its own special cohort within that. At this time, the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program is 6.2% of our budget. If our budget passes as it is, it's about, that cohort in general has about 1.5 million or so in that pot. And so Go-Go will be a part of that cohort.
So Go-Go would be a part of the 1.5, I think you said?
Right. And this is for individuals who can apply for this Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, so individuals who are Go-Go artists.
What's the overall budget, what's the overall budget proposed for FY 21?
It's about 38 million.
And what percentage of that is dedicated for Go-Go?
It's not Go-Go specifically. It's the individual fellowship, and that would take up about 6.2%.
So in other words, there's nothing specifically allocated for Go-Go music or for people in that industry where it is a dedicated funding source that nobody else can compete for?
It's a dedicated cohort within a cohort, if you will. So along with, dance has its own cohort, theater has its own cohort, humanities and so on. So Go-Go is one cohort within the individuals, the program for individual fellowships.
So I received a letter, as I believe the mayor and all the council members did, and perhaps you all received it as well, which prompted me to try to jump on to ask a couple of questions. And it was from Frank Sirius, I think Ron Moten, the Make Go-Go Forever Task Force. And they had some specific asks. $40 million endowment for the Go-Go Performing Arts that would generate annual grants to preserve and protect our Go-Go music. It's also a Go-Go cohort. So that was one of the asks that they had within the DC Arts and Humanities Commission that would receive 15% of all arts and humanities grants annually. I don't think either one of those asks was accommodated in the mayor's proposed budget. And I'm not sure if they, you know, whether those are the right ask. This isn't necessarily value judgment of what the ask is. I think it is more an amplification of the ask and the recognition that Go-Go really has never gotten the support from the city. We've started to turn that corner. And I think Councilmember Gray, you know, raised a lot of questions around the NCAC and the dedication of funding there. And I don't like, I'm going through a lot of questions about that. And I don't think it's productive to sort of, if anybody were to do it, and I'm not suggesting anybody here has done it, certainly not members of the council, but to pit Go-Go against, you know, members of the National Capital Arts Cohort. However, I think the commission needs to do more than what has already been done in its proposed budget and make it clear that there's support for this industry. I think the council has been crystal clear. The mayor has been crystal clear in her support vocally, but we need to put our money where our mouths are and put some funding behind it. And I would make a specific request that you all allocate money for Go-Go that others cannot compete for, and it would be dedicated to demonstrate the support for this industry and all that it's meant to the District of Columbia. I'll ask, there's one thing that also, there's an emergency. You all have, did you all have any COVID-related funds? Any federal CARES Act funding or otherwise? How much did you all have?
We received 421,300, $300 from the National Endowment of the Arts for relief funding.
Okay, and how much of that have you dispersed?
We are going to announce the send-out notifications this week, actually. We'll be dispersing the whole amount.
Is it premature for you to say or inappropriate for you to say whether any Go-Go individuals or organizations receive any of that funding?
We, I don't know that we've asked specifically. We have asked for artistic background of applicants so they would identify as musicians and not specifically Go-Go in our system.
Do you all know if you've ever awarded any grant to a Go-Go musician or any organization affiliated specifically with Go-Go? I know one of the things you mentioned, Director, was that the NCAC cohort successfully advocated in part because they hadn't received the sort of support over the years. And so they were successful, and the council and I, as a part of the council, supported this effort to dedicate funding for them. But they're also, in addition to the local funding, they're getting federal funding as well, right, that matches it?
I don't know if it matches, but they're a part of the Commission on the Arts, the federal funding. I, yeah, it's about, that pot is about $10 million, but I'm not sure how much they get federally.
Okay, okay. So my philosophy on equity, which I think is important, is that you don't have to pit, you know, communities against each other. You don't have to take from the NCAC to give to the Go-Go community or any other independent artist. But I think you need to focus on the smaller organizations, less-resourced organizations and individuals to ensure that they have the resources they need to be successful and to thrive, which means not necessarily waiting on them to come to you and you reaching out proactively to these individuals in these communities to see how, as the agency charged with this sort of support, how you can support them. And I would charge you all with doing more of that if you've done it all, if you've done that at all previously. There's emergency grant application, and applicants have to apparently supply an arrest and conviction record. What, you all asked about arrests and convictions. What is that about?
It's a one-page document that the Office of OPGS requires. It's a grant-making piece of, like, across the board that you would ask for arrest history.
OPGS, who is that? What agency is OPGS?
Office of Partnerships and Grants.
Is that a district agency?
Yes, it's a district agency, and it provides the sort of the best practices for DC government grant-making.
I don't think that's the best practice. I know we banned the box on asking about arrest and convictions and criminal histories years ago within government. And even a couple of years ago, we did it in the private sector as well. And so I'm not, I'm pretty sure it's not a best practice. And you all should probably commit to consult the Human Rights Commission to see whether that is appropriate to include that in the question. And if it is not, I would ask that it be immediately removed from the application because it's gonna exempt a lot of people who would likely sort of fall into this larger equity umbrella of artists and organizations that you'd like to be able to support. And so please, if you can follow up with the committee on that, that would be helpful. And I think my time has expired, Mr. Chairman. This is the only round, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I have a second round of questions, being the oversight chair. I have a hunch from your question, Mr. McDuffie, you would like to ask a few more questions.
Well, you know what? I think, I think everybody gets my point on where I'm going with this. I, you know, I think, I think the mayor and council have, we, Go-Go is the official music, Mr. Chairman. You supported it, I supported it. In fact, you texted me the day it became official, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. We've got to do more to support it. Even in tough times, we know that a lot of folks who are a part of this industry are not, have not been successful in really parlaying that into some of the, you know, million-dollar budgets that you have to meet in terms of the threshold to be a part of the NCAC. So these folks are gonna be far away from that. Let's just do more to try to support them. And I'd like to know specifically if we can identify funds, Mr. Chairman, to do that in this budget. And I'd like to be able to work with you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gray, and, you know, Chairperson Kendall and the director to be able to do that. But thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember McDuffie. I did have a few questions to follow up on the line that Mr. McDuffie was pursuing. Have Go-Go artists received funding from the commission in the past?
So our system does not identify types of music. We ask if our applicants are musicians, so they could be jazz musicians or Go-Go musicians. Likely, they have, because we have been funding musicians in the district. It's just hard to figure out if they're, what type of music they'd be playing.
And do you know if there are any who have been refused when they've applied for a grant?
So we run competitive grants, and we have peer-reviewed panels. And the panels help rank applications for funding. And so it would take looking at applicants who've been declined in the past to get to that answer.
It might be worth, if you can, taking a look at that. And the reason is because even though it's been suggested that there shouldn't be one group pitted against another, I think that there is a storyline that's been building that somehow Go-Go musicians have applied and have been part of the system. And so we might as well ought to figure out whether that's true. That's slightly different than whether Go-Go should be funded, which is a legitimate, a legitimate policy that we do want to fund related to our official music. But I think we also need to know whether, in fact, they've been shut out. So if you could try to see, maybe starting with 2020, and then looking back, I don't know how intensive that look would be. I also wanted to follow up on the question Mr. McDuffie asked regarding background checks. You had said that the Office of Grants Management has these guidelines. Are you required to follow them?
They are, the Office of Partnerships and Grants puts together a manual that most grant-making agencies follow. It's a citywide policy, is what I remember. Even when I was at the Office on African Arts, that was a required document. But if it is something that we don't have to follow, we're not wedded to the plan of using this arrest and conviction document. We can drop it if we're able to, from a compliance point of view.
So then you'll ask your agency council whether you're required to follow it. But do you know if any musician applicants, even better, Go-Go applicants, have been denied because of a criminal record?
No, that hasn't happened yet. And in terms of even your previous question about denial of Go-Go musicians, it wouldn't be an issue of them being denied because they're Go-Go musicians. It might be that, you know, they may have applied and in the ranking process, not been successful in the competitive grant process that we run. So there's no practice of, you know, singling out groups of musicians to be successful or not successful. It might just be that we need to do more support and outreach and workshops to help new applicants in general to our grants. That might be the work that we need to do more of to help them be successful in the grant requests.
So at the moment, we don't know if Go-Go groups have applied. We don't know if they've applied and been denied. And, but I'm taking from what you said that you're not aware that anybody's been denied because of a background check.
No.
Criminal record.
That's correct. The background check is a document that's part of the grant application package. But up until my time and others who've been here, we don't, you know, in the last 10 years, 15 years, nobody can recall that that's been an issue to receiving grants.
Okay. But you will check with your general counsel with regard to whether that's a procedure you're required to follow?
We certainly will, and it's already on our radar to do, by the way. So, yes.
Let me just see if I have a couple other questions. In the bill that we adopted earlier this year, declaring Go-Go the official music for the district, we required the mayor by the end of this year, or maybe by the beginning of December of this year, to create and submit to the council a plan to support, preserve, and archive Go-Go music and its history. Our sense is that this work is being done through the Office of Cable Television. Has the Commission on Arts and Humanities been approached or consulted with regard to this?
Not yet, no. And I also am aware that Director Angie Gates, who was our interim director about a year ago, had worked on a documentary film, a successful one, that she won an award for, and that lately, OCTFME has also worked with Go-Go musicians on creating virtual platforms to fundraise money. So I've been following what's been happening at OCTFME, but we haven't joined forces yet.
And they haven't reached out to you? OCTFME has not reached out to you?
Not yet.
Okay. Speaking of that office, you may be familiar, I'm sure you are. Last year, last August, the mayor created a new Creative Affairs Office within the Office of Cable Television Film, Music, and Entertainment. Has there been any outreach from that office to the Commission on Arts and Humanities?
Not so far. We talk informally. Director Gates and I have spoken a few times informally, but not as it relates to agency business. And Chairman Mendelson, I might also add one reason that Go-Go may be, you know, a good fit for OCTFME is also that there may not be a whole lot of nonprofits who are organizers or bands of Go-Go music, in which case, they would have a business model. And so that might fit better with OCTFME's structure than ours. That might be why, the reason why it started out with that kind of partnership.
Because you're, the Commission on Arts and Humanities is limited to nonprofits?
Funds nonprofits, yes.
But just to finish that line of questioning. So there's this Creative Affairs Office, but the Creative Affairs Office is existing in isolation to the Commission on Arts and Humanities thus far?
Thus far, yes. We have talked about collaboration, again, informally, but we haven't begun, you know, sort of deeper conversations.
Okay. Let me, I've used up eight minutes. Councilmember Gray, did you have any additional questions?
Am I muted?
You're on. Now you're on. You can't ask me if you're muted, if you're muted, and I can't.
I thought you could read my lips. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. I do look forward to working with the chair and the director, especially around this equity issue and how that's being communicated, and even how the illustration that was used around, I guess it was Ford Theater, how that money went down and what was the basis for that. But I would be happy to receive those answers. basis for that. But I, I would be happy to receive those answers in writing, Director.
Thank you. Councilmember McDuffie, did you have any additional questions?
No, no, I don't have any additional questions at this time. I do look forward to working with the Director and the Chairperson, as well as you, Mr. Chairman, on this issue around GoGo. But also, to be clear, that it is not an issue limited to GoGo, right? I mean, the issues that Mr. Gray raised around equity are important to this council. We, we've been doing a lot of work over the last several years around equity. And so, I think we definitely need to take this up. And I'll just say, Mr. Mr. Chairman, if, if this issue around the arrest and conviction record is being asked of applicants across grant applications in the District of Columbia, we need to look at it across the board and not just simply for the Arts Commission. This could be extremely problematic, and I would love to know what the, the basis for this is. So, I think we should ask that question to find out whether or not this is the case, and if so, whether it has to remain so, because it is likely going to be eliminating a lot of people. Thank you.
A fair point. I have no further questions for you all. Thank you very much, Ms. Kendall, Ms. Serke Baran, and I'm sure I didn't pronounce that quite right. I apologize. Hold on a second. Councilmember Silverman, you just appeared. Do you have any questions?
I'm here for Events DC, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, everybody at the Commission on Arts and Humanities and the staff as well.
Thank you.
You all are excused. You're welcome to stick around in the attendance room, but we're going to call up Events DC now.
Thank you.
Give me just a moment to get myself together. I have one person on the witness list, and that's Greg Odell, who is the President and CEO. Mr. Odell, you have anybody with you?
I do. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I am in my office and in another location or in another room, I should say. We have our CFO, Henry Mosley, and our General Counsel, Nicole Jackson.
Okay. And why don't you proceed? And good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Well, good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson, members of the committee of the whole, and pleased to testify today. I am Greg Odell, President and Chief Executive Officer of the Washington Convention and Sports Authority, also known as Events DC. As mentioned, joined with me is our CFO and our General Counsel. We are pleased to testify today about our fiscal year 2021 budget. As a quick overview, the Authority is an independent agency organized into three core lines of business, the Conventions and Meetings Division, the Sports Entertainment Division, and our Creative Services Division. The Authority owns, operates, and serves as landlord for the Walter E. Washington Convention Center, Historic Carnegie Library, which is Mount Vernon Square, home to Global Apple Flagship Store and Historic Society of Washington, the Robert F. Kennedy Memorial Stadium, the RFK Festival Grounds, the Fields at RFK Campus, the Skate Park at RFK Campus, and the non-military portions of the D.C. Armory, and the Entertainment Sports Arena at St. Elizabeth's East Campus, the Gateway Pavilion, the RISE Demonstration Center, and Nationals Park. As you were, as you are aware, at the beginning of each calendar year, we identify the Authority's operational and capital budget needs for the coming fiscal year and propose a budget to our board for their review and approval. For fiscal year 2020, before I detail FY21's budget, I'd like to address the current fiscal year 2020 budget. The Board approved the FY20 budget on March 14, 2019, in the amount of $216 million. That amount was revised by the Board on March 12, 2020, to reflect the OCTFO's February revenue estimate for dedicated taxes, increasing our budget to $219 million, and the estimate for dedicated taxes to $146 million. Shortly thereafter, we all witnessed and experienced a devastating impact of COVID-19. The hospitality industry as a whole has been severely impacted with travel and tourism coming to a halt. For the Authority, we were directly affected in March as we learned that some attendees from one of our conventions had tested positive. But with guidance from the mayor's team and the Department of Health, we had to make the tough decision to shut down operations at our venues. Since that time, the mayor proactively issued the stay-at-home order, and we have all come to learn how this novel coronavirus has affected virtually every facet of our lives. Given the COVID-19 pandemic, event activity has been canceled or postponed throughout the summer months. As a result, we revised our budget and spending plan for FY20. Specifically, the OCTFO issued a revised estimate of dedicated taxes in April, reducing the total from $146 million to $63 million. In addition, we suspended event-related operations at the Convention Center for the final six months of the fiscal year, projecting overall across Events DC a $17 million loss, resulting in $100 million in total revenue loss to our organization. In response to our projected loss of revenue, we reviewed our expenses across all divisions to identify cost savings. Further, we reallocated funds to prioritize relief to the hospitality industry, inclusive of relief to hotels, restaurants, and undocumented immigrants. The material highlights of our revised financial spending plan include the following. We had freezing of all vacant positions for the remainder of FY20. We reduced our capital expenditures from $54 million to $21.6 million. $14.5 million of that for, is for maintenance projects, and $7 million is for strategic initiatives. Provided $18 million in relief and recovery to the district's hospitality and tourism ministry, inclusive of $5 million for restaurant relief, $5 million for hotel, hotel relief, and $3 million for destination marketing, and also $5 million for undocumented workers. Just as, as a point of emphasis, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, you know, our boy, our board really was proactive in, in reprioritizing our efforts around relief. I want to thank our board, and particularly led by our Chairman Max Brown, for that effort and pushing forward, which I know we'll discuss as part of today's discussion. And lastly, we have provided $10 million in funding for the district's cultural institutions. As part of our financial planning, the Authority developed a three-year budget forecast inclusive of FY20 through FY22. Given the reduction in revenue forecasted for FY20 as well as FY21 and 22, the Authority anticipates a significant reduction in its unrestricted reserves. As shown in the chart below, or in your testimony, you'll see, we began the fiscal year with an unrestricted balance of $140 million. For FY20, we projected a drawdown of approximately $79 million from our reserves. This results in the $100 million loss in revenue, but takes into account some cost-saving measures as referenced previously. Further, while the revenue forecast for FY21 and 22 improves, and many cost measures remain in place, we are still projecting a loss for each of those years, resulting in further reductions against our restricted reserves. And as you'll see in the chart noted, we have $79 million, as mentioned, for FY20, projecting $21.6 billion for FY21, and $3.2 million for FY22, resulting in a total use of $104 million against the 140 unrestricted reserve balance, which gives us $35.9 million in total reserve balance after the three-year forecast. Now, onto fiscal year 21. I'd like to review the, the budget. It remains consistent with our statutory mission, as is mentioned previously, and that is to generate economic and community benefits for residents and businesses, to promote the district as a location for meetings, conventions, entertainment, and cultural and sporting events, and to encourage and support youth sports programming activities, and to market the district as a destination of choice for leisure travel and around the nation and across the globe. The capital operational needs of the Authority for FY21 are wholly supported by our approved budget. A breakdown by division or lines of business is as follows. For Conventions and Meetings Division, the FY21 revised operating budget is $21 million. The Division's portfolio of venues includes the Convention Center and Historic Carnegie Library. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Division had a total of 101 events booked for FY21. As of this month, 16 of those events have been canceled for FY21. While we have seen several cancellations, we've also been able to work with numerous customers to reschedule their events in hopes of hosting their events when the pandemic-related health concerns have been properly mitigated. In addition to the event cancellations or postponements, a portion of the Convention Center has been converted to an alternative care facility. The intent was to supplement the existing hospital system should its capacity be exhausted as a result of the COVID-19 situation. We recognize the critical need and support the mayor and her team in prioritizing public health as the highest priority. It is our collective hope that the Convention Center will not be needed for this purpose. We thank the mayor, the district emergency and health management agencies, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for their coordination to build the site, as well as MedStar Health for their role as managing a healthcare provider. Also included in Division's portfolio is Carnegie Library, home of the Apple Globe, Global Flagship Retail Store, which has been open since May 2019. The retail operation is co-located with the Historic Society of Washington. The partnership has been quite positive. Currently, the library is closed, and we look forward to reopening both the library and Historic Society venue when it's safe to do so. For our Sports and Entertainment Division, the FY21 operating budget is $4.5 million. The Division's portfolio of venues includes Historic RFK Memorial Stadium and adjacent festival grounds, the Field at RFK, and including the Fields at RFK, the non-military portions of the Armory, the Skate Park at RFK Stadium, the Gateway DC Pavilion, the RISE Demonstration Center, and the Entertainment and Sports Arena at St. East Campus. Venues and facilities on the Sports Entertainment campuses also remain closed at this time. We look forward to bringing some live programming back to those venues once it's safe to do so. We are actively engaged with the clients to reschedule previously scheduled events, pursue bids for major sporting events and matches, as well as exploring virtual programming options. Further, we are in constant communication with our partners and tenant at the arena, the Monumental Sports and Entertainment Team, to discuss their plans for reopening and programming with their professional teams. For our Creative Services Division, once referred to as our Special Events Portfolio, that creates in-house events and makes strategic investments and markets and promotes marquee events and culture activities across the district. Prior to COVID-19, we were poised to present the Events DC NBC Show Challenge, which had taken place in May, and the D.C. Jazz Fest presented by Events DC, which was scheduled for June, just to name a few. We were pleased to still be able to support the National Cherry Blossom Virtual Festival and Parade. As part of our reopening strategy, the Creative Services Division is focused on virtual programming and creating event programming that is aligned with the phased reopening for the city, consistent with the mayor's directive and approach. In our near future, we will announce programming inclusive of community partners across the city. In addition to our lines of business, we continue to focus on our capital program, inclusive of maintenance projects and strategic initiatives. While our maintenance projects are our first priority in terms of capital spend, our strategic initiatives are also vital. These are key investments in strategic programs and projects that position the Authority for future growth. We have completed several of those key initiatives in previous fiscal years. Some examples include the complete leaseout of the Convention Center, street-facing retail, the redesign of the center, the center's lobby and public spaces, the development and construction and opening of the Entertainment Sports Arena, and the design, excuse me, and state-of-the-art opening of the artificial turf fields at RFK Campus. Most recently, and of note, our Fields at RFK project received a National Recognition Award for the American Council of Engineering Companies for its exceptional achievement and engineering design. For FY21, approved capital expenditures budget has been reduced to $27 million, consistent with our revised financial plan to mitigate the impact of COVID-19. Within the $27 million, we are projected to spend $15.2 million on maintenance projects, such as the restaurant replacement and carpet replacement for the Convention Center, and $5 million for necessary improvements for National Stadium. For strategic initiatives, we are budgeting $11.75 million to include a portion of the streetscape project and some pre-construction work for the demolition of RFK Stadium and our required technology enhancements for such, or excuse me, such as the new human resources procurement and financial management systems to replace the current outdated systems. Overall, the Authority's total approved budget for FY21 is $164.2 million, which represents a 23.2% decrease over the FY20 approved budget of $213.8. From the district's perspective, the Authority is covered in two chapters of the budget book. First, under chapter EZO, the district transfers certain sales tax revenues to the Authority for FY21. This totals $97.35 million, which is approximately $56 million less than was reflected in the OCTFO's February revenue estimate. This amount includes $4.2 million in special-purpose revenue funds, which we show as non-operating revenue for the district's ground lease payment from the Headquarters Hotel, and $93.1 million in dedicated taxes. The remainder of our budget, again, from the district's perspective, is covered in chapter ESO, which reflects the expenditure side of the Authority's budget. On the expense side, the $164.3 million in our approved FY21 includes the following: $69.7 million for operations inclusive of all of our lines of business, $3.7 million transferred to Destination DC, $49.8 million for debt service on the Convention Center and the Marriott Marquis Hotel, $10.6 million allocated to the marketing fund, which includes the Authority's funding of Destination DC, and $27 million for the FY21 capital budget, and $3 million for reopening D.C. marketing campaign. As further review of the Authority's FY20 expenditures using the category shown above in the district's budget, for personnel services, the revised budget is $32.9 million, which includes full-time, part-time, casual positions, and all other support functions across the organization. The funding allocation for contractual services is, or other, is $27.7 million to fund services such as security, housekeeping, insurance, escalators, elevator repair, technology, just to name a few. The subsidies and transfer budget for FY21 is $18 million, which is down from $32.9 million. Under land and buildings, the category for our capital expenditures, the budget decreased by $27.4 million from FY20's approved budget of $54.4 million due to adjustments to the Authority's FY20 and FY21 capital that supports maintenance, improvement, and enhancements of our existing assets. Alto, the revised budget before you is reflective of a fiscal responsible approach to address the economic realities of COVID-19, while also continuing to adhere to the Authority's business priorities. While our financial performance was severely impacted by the pandemic, we are proactively planning for the future as the district works to recover. We look forward to supporting those efforts and to better days ahead. Mr. Chairman and members and staff of the committee, this concludes my remarks. We're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Odell. So, I do have a few questions. You did not speak in your prepared remarks about the topic of the day, the citizen witnesses. I don't know if you heard their testimony at the beginning. A lot of concern about the, I thought it was $5 million that is Events DC money that's going to undocumented community?
Yes.
And then there were two other, two other grants sums to hotels and restaurants. There was no testimony about those, but maybe you could speak to all three, but particularly explain in some detail the undocumented funding?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I made reference in summary, but I'm happy to go into more detail. So, first, with the undocumented workers, you know, it has been a pretty arduous process, and I certainly, we feel the sense of urgency from the public witnesses today. And I want to thank many people who have been involved. Just to give some context and background, you know, there have been previous efforts or iterations around providing the funding. And I think, as you had mentioned in some of your comments, you know, it's a pretty complicated or complex process of being able to first coordinate this effort to get the funding to these families, but also dealing in an unusual situation where there's not necessarily records there are provided to do so in a traditional sense. And so, where we are now is that previously, there had been exploration with different platforms. We now are in finalizing negotiations with an organization, and I, I don't want to mention that organization yet until it's finalized, so that we can provide or get approval, both from the Board and from the council, hopefully, in an expeditious fashion. But they will be a coordinating community organization. They will serve as a fiduciary, and they will also be responsible for coordinating with some core agencies, and they will secure also the instruments to provide funding to the family. So, we received a draft last night. We were very close to finalizing the MOU, so I am hopeful that we'll even have that done this weekend at the latest, I hope, and that we'll also seek approval, which I know our board is anxious for us to get this done. also seek approval, which I know our board is anxious for us to get this done. The other part I should have mentioned is that there's a, there's also been, which was mentioned by some of the testimony, there's been a lot of agencies that what we are referring to as the ground game that will work with those core agencies to actually provide referrals to those families. And so all that has been worked out in pretty significant detail, and so we are trying to memorialize that effort, and I hope we'll do that this weekend.
So with regard to the undocumented, if that agreement is finalized this weekend, your board has to approve it?
Our board has to approve it, and so we would, we normally would have a board meeting on the second Thursday of June. I know I've spoken to our chair, and I know that he would be certainly, as the board is anxious, that we would try to convene a special board meeting as soon as we're ready. So we would do that hopefully as soon as next week, and then we will obviously need to seek approval from the council as well.
From the council because it's a contract?
Correct.
Okay, so there are a couple steps in the way. One is that you have to sign the agreement, but you're closed. You have to have your board approve it, but they're willing to have a special meeting, which could be as early as next week?
Yes, and I haven't finalized the dates with that, but I've spoken obviously to our chair, and I know he's been really been pushing us to get this done, so I know he and the board in total will certainly make any accommodation we can.
And then it has to be submitted to the council for its approval?
Correct.
Which I believe would be a passive approval. However, if you get that to us, I don't remember if the deadline is Friday or Monday, June 8th, let's just say it's Friday at noon, if you get it by then, we could affirmatively approve it on June 9th and not have to wait the full 10 days.
That would be great, Mr. Chairman. We will work on that schedule.
And then the money would be released to this organization, which would then work with the, I think you call them the ground game organizations, who would then disperse the money to the individuals?
Correct. Yes, sir. There will be some core agencies, if you will, and they will actually receive the proper instruments, if you will, that will be distributed to the families. And there'll be obviously a process for vetting them that would, that would happen very quickly. And the good news is, a lot of that, that process has already been documented and will be ready to go if we finalize this agreement.
Okay, well, I think, I think there'd be a lot of support in the council for moving quickly on that, but I'm going to ask a sort of a negative question on this issue. A year ago, you know, the council fought to get some excess cash out of Events DC.
Yep.
I think our fight was more with the chief financial officer than with you, but there was no excess cash, we were told, and that was before the pandemic where you have identified, said you have reduced your unrestricted reserves or will have by 103 million, leaving what? Basically reducing them maybe 60%. How is it that if there was no cash last year, and for sure you've now, you're going through 60% of your unrestricted reserves, that the agency was able to find 18 million for various, you know, the various relief purposes?
Sure, so I wouldn't characterize there was no cash. I think what we had suggested is that we were, had allocated capital dollars, certainly for the maintenance of our facilities, that was the highest priority. And so I think in the presentation I made last time before the council, I had showed what the unrestricted balances were, and also showed what our capital expenditures were. And so what we've done in this particular, both in the current fiscal year for FY20, but also for FY21, is we have dramatically reduced our capital spend, but we've also even reduced our operating spend. And we felt like, as an organization, and I give the board a lot of credit, that we had to reprioritize not only reducing our spend, but also provide relief to our industry colleagues that needed it most. These are unprecedented times, and that's why we not only reduced spend, but we felt like we needed to prioritize and provide some relief.
You have reduced from about $58 million in capital expenditures last year to a proposed $27 million capital expenditure next year? What have been cut out?
So a couple of key projects. The good news is, I would say from a life safety perspective, we feel like we're still maintaining the building, and we still have ample capital to do that, but there are some key projects that we are working on, two of which I would mention as examples are, we have, all the restrooms have not been upgraded since their original construction. And so not only in terms of just proper upgrade, but also we're in the business of attracting customers, and we're competing against every other destination, just as every hotel has a capital program, every convention center has a capital program, and it's vital that we actually provide upgrades to our facilities. And so there's about $6 million in total that we would spend on the restaurant, on the restroom upgrades, is just one example. We're going to defer and push that project back. We'll spend some dollars, but not the full-blown program that we would have done. The other thing is related to our carpet as another example. We had carpet replacement throughout the building, and again, I should have mentioned, and I don't want to take it for granted, that people may not know, we have 2.3 million square feet of space, and so you can imagine anything as simple as replacing bathrooms or carpet, or excuse me, the carpet has many zeros behind it because there's a huge facility that we have to span to cover. So that carpet replacement is also about a $5 million number, but there's lots of projects that we are deferring, but we made sure that the critical life safety projects were still being maintained. The other thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is, as you may be aware, we had some strategic initiative projects, such as our streetscape project, and that project was on a, the normal schedule would have had us finishing probably in the next 18 months, and substantial work would have been done in the 12 months. We are now spreading that project over the next three years. And so those are the things that we're deferring and moving back. Again, maintenance is always going to be critical, that we take care of the maintenance first and life safety issues first, but where there are projects like that, and the last one I should mention is the RFK demolition project. We had that scheduled to at least start spending some dollars, or at least significant dollars this fiscal year, and certainly more next fiscal year. We are now pushing that project back where we would not start the, the actual demolition work until '23.
Thank you. I have a few more questions, but let me turn to, let me first see if Councilmember McDuffie is still on the line? I don't think he is, and I think Councilmember Gray got off. So Councilmember Silverman, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, and good afternoon, Mr. Odell.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you virtually. I want to cover two topics, certainly the grants, and then understand your reserves a little bit better. So first, I do want to applaud again Events DC's, you and Events DC's board for using the dedicated taxes that do come from the restaurant and hotel industry to help the restaurant and hotel industry and the workers who have made our restaurants Michelin rated and our hotels very well thought of. So I know you gave some answers to the chairman, but I want to do a slower walk through them. So first, let's talk about the grants to the restaurant industry. So I believe there was a contract with the Restaurant Association of Metropolitan Washington that I saw was sent to the council. So just explain to us when that was executed and how it will work.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and I'm sorry, I know I focused on the undocumented workers, but thank you for asking that. So we had executed that agreement, I believe, in early May, and we actually transferred the funds to the Restaurant Association on May 20th. Their purpose is to administer the entire program, so they will actually work closely with DMPED, who has the micro grant program, and there were, again, just to give better context, there were a set of restaurant applicants as part of that program, and so we felt like we could add more and enhance that program, and we were happy to work with the mayor and with the deputy mayor to do that. And so the Restaurant Association is responsible for facilitating payment and approval of those applicants. There's roughly about 1,000 applicants in that pool, just over 1,000, and so what's happened so far is that there have already been about 900, over 900 applicants have been approved in that process, and we've already made payments to 500 applicants, roughly, so about $2 million have already been spent, and we think we'll quickly make payments for the rest of those applicants within the next week or so. So that process has been moving quite fluidly.
Okay, and this was presented as help for the industry, both for businesses and workers. So are the applicant restaurant operators, and the idea is that they will get assistance, and that might come in the form of helping with their payroll? Is that the idea that, behind the worker assistance?
You're absolutely right, Councilmember. This is, and we targeted, really, the focus was, many of those restaurants are 100 employees or less, so they really are the sweet spot of small businesses, and there were approved expenditures that certainly included payroll, but also included some operations expenditures. We recognized it wasn't necessarily going to solve all of their problems, and it's only $4,000 per, but every little bit helps, particularly some restaurants that were, that are back in operations, they can cover some payroll, and they can even cover food costs for their delivery as well. And so we hope that this supplemented with other programs would provide the funding, but you're absolutely right, that's exactly the intent.
Okay, and how, there have been questions around oversight of these grants and transparencies. So if I want to know who these 500 applicants who've received money are, how do I find that out? Are you?
Yes, we can provide a, we can provide a list of the applicants and the status of their, and we also have the ability to provide any, we've received documentation, and we can, to enact any audit rights that we need to if we wanted to verify any of the applicants.
Okay, I would like to know that. And now, Mr. Odell, how does the hotel industry grant work?
So the hotel industry grant, and we work closely with the Hotel Association, we did an allocation of the dollars on a per-room basis, and so the roughly, I think the universe is about 145 hotels that were, that would be qualified for this program, and the number of rooms is roughly about, I think about 33,000 rooms that are in the city, and so that, those monies would be allocated on a per-room basis. And so as an example, if you had a 400-room hotel, those dollars on a per-room basis could be over 50-some thousand dollars, which, you know, those, those types of hotels cost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to operate, so again, it may not solve all their issues, but we also specified that the 80% of those funds be allocated towards specifically for employees or for benefits, and so we want to make sure that was the case, and then there were some other allowable expenses, but that's how that program worked. To date, right now, we've seen about 80 applicants that have actually come through, and so that payment roughly, I think we're going to be, status to date, roughly around $2 million of payments, so we will make probably one more round of, to seek applications out of that total pool of 145 million, or 145 hotels.
Events, I'm sorry, is Events DC, the, is Events DC running this grant?
We are, I'm sorry, yeah, we, we work closely with the Hotel Association so we could get the inventory of hotels, but we also, and they were helpful in Destination DC, also helped us to make sure we captured all the potential hotels, even those that were not members of the Hotel Association, but we are facilitating the verification and the payment to those qualified hotels.
Okay, so I want to contrast the speed in which monies were distributed in the restaurant and hotel grants to our workers who are undocumented or do not qualify for UI, you know, and there's a perception out there that, you know, the council is geared toward giving money out to businesses, but then when it's for workers, they have to wait. Now, I understand, that's why I wanted to be thorough about asking you about what the monies would be used for, and certainly the monies will be used for workers in the restaurant and hotel industries, but obviously this $5 million is specifically for workers who are shot out of basically safety net, and this is going to be their safety net. So what, I guess I'll just ask point blank, Mr. Odell, what, what's the problem? What's the holdup? Why did it take so long?
Sure, so I, I think a couple of things. One, as the chairman, I listened to the dialogue with some of our public witnesses. One, I feel the sense of urgency. We are, we agree 100%, so it's not from a lack of desire, intent, and certainly effort, but part of the issue initially was, there was a movement of foot or an effort to actually use or leverage a platform that would have provided that payment. After several iterations, it appears that platform was not the right course or process to use. So I won't, I wasn't.
You're gonna have to unpack, yeah, you're gonna have to unpack what that means.
It's a, it's a platform or organization that they were going to use that would provide the payment. So I'm not passing aspersions, for whatever reason, that process did not work, and so we had to seek other means of how we would actually facilitate payment. And as the chairman mentioned, there, you know, it's not a traditional sense where we have records of folks, and we also want to be sensitive of how we actually provide the funding and how we leverage all the organizations that will touch these, these families. So it's not an excuse, but it's a very complicated effort that we probably will have over 50 organizations at the end of the day involved in providing this funding. So a lot of frustration from all of us, but I think we're very close, but we are as probably strong about making this payment or getting this done as we were the other two buckets, for sure. So it hasn't been a lack of focus or priority.
Okay, so let me, I know I have a minute left, so let me just understand, so you're working with an organization that has expertise, let's say, in granting money and giving out money, is my understanding, and then I thought there were like some lead organizations already identified who do work with our immigrant and undocumented community, so are they still involved in the process?
They are, they are.
They are?
They are. I'm sorry, Councilmember, they are. So there's, there's two pieces. There is the ground game that I referred to, so that is what you just referred to. There will be core agencies, and they will actually be, one, they will receive those instruments that will get distributed to the families, and they will also work with what we'll call referral agencies that will also be responsible for working with the core agencies to identify the families who will get the funding. So that's kind of part A. The, the second part that I referred to was that community organization that will actually have an agreement with those core agencies, and so they will get the funding and disperse that funding through the instruments that they have to procure.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm out of time. I do have some more questions, so will, will there be a second round?
Councilmember, I think the short answer is yes. I'm watching the clock for personal reasons, but there'll be time for a second round.
Okay.
Let me kind of just follow up, just so we're clear, Mr. Odell, because I do know a little bit of this, because you and I have talked about this several over the past month. At the time that Events DC voted to authorize the money, you were aware of, and I'm not going to mention the name of any organization, I actually don't remember the correct name, you were aware of an organization that you were told might be able to handle the platform, if you will, to distribute the money?
Right.
And that's the organization you worked with, and in fact, they didn't have a platform ready, and you went back and forth with them, and ultimately it was clear that they couldn't do it, couldn't do it timely, so then you had to look for an alternative, and you've, am I right about that?
That's absolutely correct.
And so you've been in a search for the past month, I guess, to find an organization that could actually handle getting the money out to the ground game organizations? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And I will also add, and this sounds like it's a leading question, but this is not a normal endeavor that the Convention Center Authority or Events DC is used to.
That's also correct, Mr. Chairman, but we'll, we make no excuses, we want to get it done, so we have, we have good people on board, so we're focused on it.
And the dollars for the restaurants and hotels, when did they first start going out?
The dollars for the restaurants and hotels probably just started going out, my guess is. The dollars for the restaurants and hotels probably just started going out, my guess is probably mid-May. So now probably 10 days ago.
10 days, and you're hopeful that next week you will, that we will approve the, actually it'd be June 9th that we would approve the contract, and then the dollars can go out for the undocumented.
Correct, and I should actually clarify, I think the restaurants just started going out less than that, because we just provided funding to the Restaurant Association on May 20.
On May 20. So let me go to some questions that I had. The, let me see, the mayor's proposed supplemental does not address the current Events DC budget. I understand that the approved budget was increased by $1 million for the Cherry Blossom Festival, $100,000 for the Historical Society in February. And I assume that that budget was increased for hospitality industry coronavirus relief in the emergency field hospital. Given current revenue estimates, how much must a council-approved FY '20 spending be cut by the council in order to balance Events DC's budget? Are you able to handle that all internally?
Can you clarify that question? You're asking whether the council set our budget?
Yeah, I'm not sure I liked how I phrased all that. Does the council need to, we have your budget for next year before us now. Do we need to act on your revised fiscal '20 budget? Or are you able to do that internally?
We are, so we've made the adjustments internally for our portion of the spend, if that's what you're asking for. So we have, we have reduced our reserves to offset the spending required where we didn't call save otherwise. So if you're asking about your portion of the allocation, we are not, we have not covered any of that for any funding that would have come from the city. If that's your question, sir.
Sort of. The, if I were to rent, let's say Exhibit Hall A, I would have to pay you a fee, correct?
Correct.
The city is using Exhibit Halls A and B for the temporary hospital?
Yes.
Are they paying you rent?
So they are paying, we will get, and that, you know, those monies will come from both the city, but also hopefully the lion's share will be reimbursement from FEMA. So we are working with the city right now to identify what all the costs are that will be reimbursed. So we are tracking those costs. In some cases, rent is part of that, we've seen in other jurisdictions. So we're seeking clarification with the Fed, federal government as well, about what the appropriate reimbursement will be. So we hope to get reimbursed for a majority of those costs.
So you're seeking clarification whether the federal relief money can be used to pay rent?
Correct, on rent. There's certainly other expenses for sure that we are getting reimbursed for, and we are working with the city closely to do that.
And if the federal money can be used for rent, then the hospital, just like any other user of Exhibit Halls A or B, would have to pay a rental fee?
Correct.
Dedicated tax transfers to Events DC in fiscal year '21 are projected to be $48 million less than they were in fiscal year '18.
Yes.
But the agency's proposed fiscal year '21 budget is $4 million more than the approved fiscal year '18 budget. My first question is, how is this possible? But I think I know the answer, your testimony was about taking from reserves, is that correct?
That is correct.
And why is that logical? If your revenues are less than they were in FY '18, why would your expenditures be more than what they were in FY '18?
Are you referring to '18 or '20, sir, I'm sorry?
I'm referring to '18.
Okay.
It's just another way of looking at the budget.
Okay, I don't have, I can quickly look at '18, and I'll ask my CFO if he has it in front of him to look as well. I think the short answer to first, I'll tell you, is that we don't, our budgets aren't necessarily linear. We have different event programming every year. So we may have a different set of events that come in for FY '20 versus FY '18 or '19. So it really depends on the forecast and how we're booked. So you won't necessarily see any growth or changes year over year, because it's not the same set of business or revenues. So that's the first answer I would give you. But I'd have to look closely at '18 to compare the variances that you just spoke of.
Well, maybe, maybe you could get back to me on that. A way of looking at the budget, comparing next year to 2018, two years ago, because that is kind of what's happened to our, our spending, is that it has constricted, contracted that much. The proposed budget calls for $629,000 reduction in energy spending to account for savings based on the actual usage at RFK Stadium. Based all of your change plans, that sounds realistic, $629,000 reduction in energy spending?
It does, Mr. Chair. We recognize some spending reduction this year as we shut down operations, but now we'll see that over the full year for RFK.
Now, you also were planning on tearing down RFK this year, and that's been delayed. What's the status of the demolition?
So right now, it's been delayed because we're, you know, we feel that we need to prioritize and reduce our spending. And so that's the only reason. We feel like it's necessary to move forward as soon as we can, if we have the funding. And if we saw the economy recover, we'd love to move forward that project. We still are planning to make award and start the pre-construction activities, and particularly go through the regulatory process. But we'll make sure, we'll make provisions in that contract that we will only move forward with the funding. And right now, under the current projections, we won't do so until 2023.
You've faded out at the end.
Sorry, I just said, right now, we'll still move forward with awarding that contract, probably by the end of this fiscal year. But we will still maintain our expenses, and until we see the economy improve, we will not prioritize that until 2023.
Section 10-1202 of the DC Code establishes the amount of tax revenue that is to be deposited in the marketing fund and the marketing service contracts to be issued. Should we consider making any changes to the marketing fund or the additional tax on grocery receipts for transient lodgings or accommodations?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair. I mean, we have budgeted accordingly. One of the things that we've included in our budget, as you see, is some dollars also for, for marketing the destination, some additional dollars. And so we are, we've also added that to 2021 in addition to FY '20. So given all the other expenses that we're managing, we feel like we'll manage that appropriately, but also we're providing some additional funding in that category.
So you have a marketing fund, that's a discrete fund?
Correct.
Do you have any other funds that are set aside from your ordinary spending?
No, we don't, we don't have any, and that, that fund is formulaic that you're referencing, but we don't have any set-aside fund. I mean, we allocate for capital programs or other, other programs, but there's no set-aside fund.
So to phrase that question differently, the marketing fund is the only fund that you have?
It is the only fund we have. I'll ask our CFO to clarify if there's any, any technical differentiator that I'm not articulating. But I, just to clarify, we are, we will allocate, or in our, this year's proposed 2021 budget, we are allocating $3 million of additional destination marketing.
Mr. Mosley, do you want to?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
You didn't expect a call, did you?
Yeah, that's right. It is the only fund that we have, and as far as the CEO indicated, it is formula-driven. It's a percent of the hotel tax that we receive that establishes the fund. And it goes directly to that, and we use those dollars to, for our marketing efforts, and sometimes subsidizes with our own other revenues. But that's particularly the fund that exists.
Okay, thank you, so that's the only fund, thank you. Councilmember Silverman, questions?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Odell, I want to just complete the questioning on the grants. So I can't remember what language you used, but it was something about, so there was a platform that didn't work, and now there's a new organization that you're completing a grant agreement with. But then, how will the workers get the money? And what, is the plan still to give $1,000 to each eligible worker? And like, will they, how are they going to get it? What are, what will be required to prove that they are eligible?
Yes, so thank you for the question. And I, I don't want to be evasive, council member, but I also want to be careful that this program hasn't been finalized, but also the sensitivity about airing all this, the details about this program. So the first, the second question is, they will get $1,000, that is definitely how this will work. The core agencies, the main agencies, once they have an agreement with the organization that I spoke of previously, they will get some instruments that will allow them to provide funding. There'll be a verification process, which those referral agencies that touch many of the families directly will help verify, one, identify those families, but also help verify those families. So there will be a verification process that will be captured and verified, and that we also will have access to to make sure that that happens. And so the core agencies will likely be the only ones that, that actually have access to those instruments for payment. But there will be other organizations that will help identify and refer, if that makes sense. And I'm sorry, but that's probably what I think is the most appropriate answer right now, given where we are in the process. I can't hear you, council member, I'm sorry.
Oh, I know, yes, I'm trying to be a good muter. So well, is an, is an instrument, is that, is that like a gift card? Or I guess I'm just trying to understand from a worker's perspective, what are they going to get?
Could be a debit card as an example.
Debit card, okay. And I'll just say, Mr. Odell, and again, I do want to thank you and the Events DC Board, I actually ran into Board Chairman Max Brown last weekend, I think at the Mount Vernon Farmer's Market. And we had a great, very good conversation about this. So I congratulate you, but I'll just say, you know, we, we have other programs that help undocumented workers in our city that we haven't hidden at all. You know, we have basically a healthcare program, the DC Healthcare Alliance, that is, is pretty much just a Medicaid program for undocumented workers. And then I shouldn't admit that I haven't poured into the budget as much as perhaps the chairman has, but I believe the mayor put additional funding into the legal aid fund, which is specifically designed for undocumented workers. So I guess, I certainly know Events DC doesn't have a lot of experience, but our government does. And I guess I'm surprised that perhaps, you know, our agency's DOH, that deals with the healthcare alliance, and I'm not sure if it's the Office of Latino Affairs or who is the agency fiscal agent for the legal aid dollars, but why they couldn't just lend a hand, because they, you know, they, they do grants specifically for this population. I'll leave it there, you don't have to respond. Since only have five minutes, oh, okay.
I was gonna say, I, I think, I think the scale and magnitude of this program, I don't know there's others at this level of funding, but I will say, the other thing that everyone has been involved in, I give the mayor's office credit for, you know, for helping us figure this out, is that they want to create a platform that will allow other people to fund and provide more funding. So I think that it wasn't just about us, and we can see, we weren't in this business, but we are to help support. But I think the notion is to make sure that other funding can come behind and use the same format. So sorry for everybody that we're dotting i's and crossing t's, but that's been kind of the issues that make sure this, this can be sustainable.
Oh, that brings up a good point. So I believe the Open Society Institute had put 1 million toward helping undocumented workers. So is that going to be combined with your 5 million?
I believe so, I'm not coordinating others, but I don't know the dollar amount specifically, but I know that they have been involved in also being coordinated with, with their funding as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Odell. I think those are my questions on that. So let me just move to the reserves, and I will be honest that I was distracted for a few minutes during the chairman's questioning, so I might have already asked that. But I just want to understand the reserves a little bit better. So you said in your testimony, you anticipate drawing down 70 million, 79 million, but you expect more than 100 million decline. So that's like a $21 million difference. So how are you balancing the budget then?
Yes, I'm sorry, council member, just to clarify, that $100 million was the revenue loss, and that includes both the taxes, as well as in FY '17, FY '20 is an example, that also included our operating revenue. So the, the, the points that the chairman made about the revenue that we get from rentals, that's also declined significantly as a result of COVID-19. We are also, though, putting in cost reductions in place. And so we are reducing, freezing our positions, any vacant positions, which are about 36, we're freezing those. We're reducing contracts as well, and then we're reducing our capital spend. So all that combined with the revenue losses, how we're, with the math, what it adds up to the number that you're referring to, the 79 offset, takes into consideration our cost savings.
Gotcha. And then, well, the reserves, I know that you always, Events DC has given bonuses in the past to staff. Will some of the reserve money be used to give bonuses this year?
I should have mentioned, no, no bonuses and no colas, not only for FY '20, but for, also for FY '21. There will be no adjustments and also no bonuses.
Okay. And now you say you're only taking 21.6 million from the reserves in fiscal year '21, which I would read that you expect that there's going to be a pretty vibrant bounce back of conventions. What's the evidence for that, given that, I guess I have the opposite impression that there's so much uncertainty? And every, you know, I mean, the CDC guidance that I read this morning that freaked out all of our smart streets people is they don't, they don't suggest, recommend people getting on public transportation anymore. So how can they recommend anyone going to a conference?
That's a great, great question and great, great, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, it's a great question, council member. So the, our '21 budget is based on a forecast that assumes conservatively that we really won't see significant event activity until January. So even the first quarter of FY '21, we're not anticipating. Now, having said that, we still have events on the books, and we're still working with our customers to see whether that can be shifted later or whether we still will have any events. But to your point, we recognize that we may not be in a mass gathering business anytime soon. And so the reason why we are projecting less revenue, or excuse me, a smaller reserve hit in FY '21, is because some of the expenses we had in FY '20, like all the relief funds that we discussed, are one-time costs. And so we think that we've pared down some of our expenses in '21 as well. We also are not going to have some of those one-time relief costs as well.
Okay, I'll just put this out there, but what happens if the convention business cannot recover? Will you then exhaust all of your reserves in '21?
So a couple of things, we'll, we will pull more levers, and so we've reduced, you know, some capital expenditures. For the moment, we've frozen positions, but we've also, you know, been very transparent with our staff that we have to look at all of our expenses, including our salaries. And so if that meant even reductions of salaries, which is what we prefer as opposed to having to lay off anybody, we'll look at all options, but we'll exhaust reducing our expenditures and be fiscally responsible and try to preserve our reserves as best we can. But recognizing at the end of the day, that's what those reserves are for, but we're going to be responsible fiscal managers first.
So are you saying you're looking at layoffs, might be a possibility?
Anything's possible, but we will at least look to reduce our expenses, including if we had to reduce salaries as an example, but that's not our preference.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one final question, can I get your permission to ask it?
Sure, but let me just interject, the, Mr. Odell was being, I think, forced to use the word layoffs. That's not in your budget, correct?
It is not, so thank you for asking to clarify. It is not. So thank you for asking to clarify. We are not laying off and nor at this point have we reduced salaries. And we've actually had a great telework, uh, program in place. Obviously, some of, uh, a lot of our activities event-specific, but we also have been looking to, um, do virtual programming. We've certainly been very active in rescheduling events in our sales teams and even booking new events as well in our facilities. People, uh, our staff have been incredibly busy maintaining our facilities and even supporting now an alternative care facility. So we, we have, uh, certainly, they've always been our highest priority and they'll continue to do that. And so we will look at reducing other expenditures before we, um, look at any, uh, salary reductions, if we even had to consider that.
Councilmember Silver-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what is the $3 million in funding for reopening DC marketing? What, what is that? What, will that go towards?
Yes, so that will be, you know, we'll work closely with our, uh, marketing partners, like obviously Destination DC plays a huge role in marketing city. So we recognize, and we're going to be competing with all the other destinations, that we're going to have to spend additional dollars on marketing our city to draw our visitors back. Uh, we think that we'll probably have to focus on a domestic market first, um, particularly local and those that are in driving distance to come back to our restaurants. And then ultimately, we hope we'll see domestic travel come back, probably on the leisure side first, even before the conventioneers come back. And then ultimately, we'll also focus on the international traveler. So that's what those, those dollars will be focused on.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for the extra time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Odell. Stay safe. And I look forward to news about when the money is on the, for the undocumented workers will be dispersed.
Great, thank you, Councilmember.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Silverman. Just a couple more questions. Uh, Mr. Odell, your subsidies and transfers budget for fiscal year 21 is $18 million, which is down from $32.9 million. So what's being cut out?
Uh, it's mostly far, uh, formulaic and driven by the reduction dedicated taxes, but I'll ask our CFO to provide more detail, please.
Yes, specifically, it is a major part of the dedicated tax reduction. As I said earlier, the marketing fund is funded from a, from part of the hotel tax. So with the depletion of that to a certain degree, that will reduce, um, by a large part of that. We also are reducing our transfers to, uh, RFK campus by, uh, they did maintenance effort for us and right now that's not necessary to the extent it has been in the past. Uh, the last item I think that is a key is, uh, the dedicated transfer tax to, uh, Destination DC is also reduced because you're aware the council passed a pass through to them. So those are the three key elements, our marketing fund, uh, reduction of, uh, to DGS for the maintenance of RFK campus and the Destination DC pass through accounts for the difference.
How much is the reduction to, uh, Destination DC?
Uh, $2.6 million. The marketing fund is about 13 million of that and, uh, other portion of about 2.1 million on the, uh, DGS situation.
The budget for Events DC calls for a $4 million reduction in contract services. Most Events DC contracts appear to be multi-year or opt-for-year contracts. So how will this reduction be obtained? Will the agency renegotiate or opt not, uh, not to renew contracts?
Uh, thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. So, you know, a lot of those contracts are also, uh, event-specific. And so they are, they may have not to exceed based on hours or based on event activity. And so particularly in those instances, uh, when there's just a reduction of, of the volume of events, um, they'll be reduced, reduced accordingly. And, and if they're not to exceed amounts where they're based on, uh, hourly, uh, performance, then we don't have to modify those contracts per se. It'll allow for us to reduce based on the effort.
And so that's where then most of that reduction is?
It is.
How much do you propose to transfer to Destination DC in 2021?
I believe the number is about, is approximately $9 million. Henry, would you like to confirm that number?
We will transfer to them. 3.7 million.
No, no, not the, not the, uh, not the money that comes to the council, the percentage of the marketing fund, uh, Henry.
Oh, I'm sorry, another, uh, 8 million.
So you proposed to transfer to Destination DC in 2021, about $8 million?
And that's, uh, yes, Mr. Chair, and that is the formulaic, that's the version that they get, um, per the statute, they get a percentage of the marketing fund. And so that is formulaic and that's what they'll get. But then we also put the additional $3 million in for, uh, Destination Marketing in the year, which we'll work with them, uh, to make sure we get additional dollars on marketing.
Is that 3 million in FY 20 or 21?
In both, Mr. Chair.
In both, so it's a total of six?
Correct.
I mean, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's $9 million in FY 21 to them, not 8.
8, I have to cross that out and put down 9.
Sorry about that.
Okay. It's easy for you to say. I can't read my notes now. Uh, I think that was my last question. So thank you, Mr. Odell. Uh, I think I owe you a phone call about something else I'll get to at some point. Thank you, uh, each of you. I appreciate it. Uh, and, um, I sure am hopeful that things, uh, don't get any worse than the current projections, because this is definitely, um, hard on, um, the, the work that the Events DC is supposed to be doing. Again, thank-
I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, we agree and thank you, appreciate, but thank you again for all your, um, support and guidance with us and look forward to talking to you soon on the other issues.
Sure. Uh, so, um, I think they can exit the hearing room, whatever that means. And I'm going to close out this hearing. Uh, this has been, um, a hearing of the committee, the whole. We have, uh, hearings on June 4th and June 11th with the Education Committee. On June 4th, public witnesses and, uh, Ossi, and on June 11th, the Mayor for Education and the CPS. The committee, the whole will have a hearing on all of the bills that are related to the budget on June 17th and June 18th. On the screen is the contact information. This would be Bill 23 dash 760, the Budget Support Act. Bill 23 dash 761, the Local Budget Act. Bill 23 dash 762, the Federal Portion Budget Request Act. And Bill 23 dash 763, which is the FY 2020 Revised Local Budget. And there is a deadline for signing up to testify, which I believe is two days before, and we adhere to those deadlines. The, um, testimony can be submitted by email. If you're testifying, if you've registered to testify, you should give us your testimony in advance by email. If you're not testifying at the hearing, you, and you want to comment, uh, email written testimony as well, co@dccouncil.us, or you can simply call that number on the screen, 430-6948, and speak for up to three minutes and that will be transcribed as a statement from you. Uh, so that's a new and different way to testify. Information about our hearings, including copies of the testimony, can be obtained by going to our website, which is chairman mendelson.com. That's one word, chairman mendelson.com slash FY 2021. The time is 1:55 in the afternoon and this hearing is adjourned.